Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Council President Kate McAllister. Also present are Deb Rule, Andy Groth, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. Councilor Spiro is absent. If everyone will please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Jennifer, do you know that none of our monitors are on?
Well, yeah, I just told Melissa.
Madam President?
Yes.
May we pause the meeting for a moment and revisit our system?
Yes. We will pause for a moment. Let's resume. Are there any comments from council or announcements?
Yes, Kate, Madam President, I'd like to congratulate Kate on her wonderful performance in the production of Misery over the weekend. A lot of people have the honor of going out and seeing Kate perform on stage at the Panda, and it was truly horrifying. Congratulations.
Thank you, I think. Well, it was a horror show, so it should have been horrifying. Anything else?
Well, if we're gonna be silly, there is officially some snow at Pine Street Woods. I was up there later this afternoon, and so let's... Here it comes, winter.
Oh, goody. Okay, are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Madam President, just this week, just a couple reminders about special events coming up. On November 10th, the Get Pine Street Plowed event will be occurring downtown on Cedar Street between Third and Second Avenues from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And we will have closures on Cedar Street that evening for the event. All of the adjacent business owners signed off with the impact to their businesses. And this event sponsored by Kynexu Land Trust, Pondray Peddlers, and Sandpoint Nordic Club. The following day, November 11th, there will be a Veterans Day memorial. The 11th is Veterans Day. It will be down at War Memorial Field in front of the Veterans Memorial plaques and the flagpoles at 10:45, and that will be sponsored by VFW Post 2454. And reminder to council and the public that Veterans Day is recognized as an official holiday for the city, so city offices are closed that day.
On Friday?
Yes.
Excuse me, Jennifer, did you say the tent for the Get Plowed?
Yes, and the 11th for the Veterans Day memorial.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all we have tonight.
All right. We will now go into the public forum portion. We'll now proceed with public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council and the council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have the opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to the clerk. The forms are available on the table by the door. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, I will ask for public comment, and then you may raise your hand at that time. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or to staff, and do not approach the dais. Please note that during public forum, council may not hear or take testimony on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during the public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated they would like to speak during public forum?
Yes, Madam President, Janine Shepherd.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Janine Shepherd, Bonner County, just wanted to let you know, I do pray for you other times than just when I'm here, but I do want to bring prayer for us tonight. So if you'd join me. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful place that we call home. We thank you for all the ways that you bless us daily. We see your hand of protection on us, and we want to pause and praise you. You are a good Father. We ask for godly counsel and wisdom for the city council and their staff. We pray that you and your kingdom of righteousness be manifested in the hearts of all of those who are in authority in our city. We ask for your blessing and insight on them as they plan for the coming year. Lord, we publicly repent for things that we have done and things we have not done. Forgive us, Father, for not giving you our full attention and for taking you out of all the places you belong. We pray now that the blood of Jesus would wash us clean. Bring the nation to the foot of the cross to be forgiven and turn our nation's heart towards you, holy Father, that we may put you first and obey your commandments. In 2 Chronicles 7:14 and 15, it says, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek your face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. Now my eyes will be open and my ears attentive to the prayers made in this place. For now I have chosen and sanctified this house, that my name may be there forever, and my eyes and my heart will be there perpetually. We stand firm today and push back the darkness that is fighting to cover our land. It may seem like we are living in dark times, but we have hope, hope in Jesus, because your light always wins. At our lowest point, you are our hope, and at our weakest points, you are our strength. We submit our lives and our country to you, Lord. We pray for revival to sweep across the nation, and that we will remember this time not only for its challenges, but that a nation fell at your feet. We praise you for your goodness and thank you for your mercy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
One moment, Madam Clerk. No. I do have one other public forum in the room.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Becky Meyer.
Good evening. I submitted a letter for the development. It's on the agenda for tonight, and going from single-family dwellings into multi-unit. And I just wanted to remind the council the same that I always do, that we will probably have more students with that, and there's no money that comes to the school district. And I just wanted to be really aware that we are starting to burst at the seams at several schools. And just want to remind the council to be aware of that as we move forward with more people moving in, especially with students. Also, just, we are at the end of our first quarter, so Friday is in the first quarter already. It seems like we just started, and it's been a great first quarter. And then we do have Veterans Day programs at every school according to the Constitution. So we do that at all schools. We have a program on Friday, November 11th. We are in session. So, you know, I just wanted to thank you all for a good first quarter and make sure that I go on record for us as a school district to be cognizant of the increase in student enrollment that I think will be coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $686,992.88 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Some of...
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Why don't I get all the public hearings? Next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Phase 4 of University Place subdivision development, Bonner County parcel RPS 393-6001002AA, a 227-dwelling unit development of approximately 14.5 acres located to the east of the intersection of Ebbett Way and North Boyer Avenue, west of Sand Creek, north of the railroad tracks, and south of Moscow Street. During the hearing, we will be taking testimony on three applications related to this property. A, approval of rezon from residential single-family to residential multifamily, city application number PZC22-0002. B, a combined planned unit development preliminary and final development plan, application number PPUD22-00101. And C, an amended preliminary plat, application number PS22-0004. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on October 11th, 2022. Following a Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing on September 20th, 2022, the commission voted to recommend to city council conditional approval of all three applications. I will now recite the order and procedure of the public hearing. One, explanation of the subject of the public hearing by city staff. Two, presentation by the applicant. Please note that council members should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Three, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. I will defer to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows. That's where we're at.
That's where we're at, number three.
Okay. First, those in favor will testify. Second, those who are neutral. And third, those who are opposed to the application. Applicants rebuttal testimony. At which time, the final questions may be asked of the applicant is the fourth item in order, and please note if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Fifth, the public hearing will be closed. And sixth, the council will deliberate. No new information will be provided after the hearing has been closed, with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received prior to agenda posting were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council. Please note that the public hearing is for comments only. Do not address any questions to council or myself or to city staff. If council members have questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of their testimony. For those participating on Zoom, you'll need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. If you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or opposed, I will call for testimony on each. You will raise your hand on Zoom at that time when your name is called. You will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you'll need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. Those here in chambers who would like to speak will need to complete a sign-up form available by the front door on the table, and then hand that to the clerk up here in the front right of the room. Please state on your form whether you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or are opposed to the request. You will see those options on the form. Please do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand those to the clerk up in the front of the room. And just a reminder that those in attendance, please do not disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, comments, and exclamations from the audience. Before we proceed, I'd like to ask for confirmation from each city council member that you've had no ex parte contact or conflict of interest as pertains to this request. Okay. I hear none. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweeden for an introduction and explanation of this request. Thank you, Amy.
Again, this is a public hearing on three separate cases, PZC22002, PPUD22001, and The subject property is a part of University Park, which then became University Place. The preliminary plat for the full development was approved in 2020, and that included four phases. Pursuant to the development agreement for the overall development, Phase 4 was anticipated to come forward with a rezoning from the current zoning of single-family consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map. This Phase 4, University Place Phase 4, request includes three actions: a rezoning, a PUD with a combined preliminary and final development plan, and an amended preliminary plat. The first request is the property rezoning. The request is to rezone the entire property from our single-family residential to our multiple-family residential, and the map in the upper right corner shows the current zoning as single-family. Property rezoning must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and be found to not place undue burden on public services. The property is within the three future land use context areas, C context area 3, context area 3B, and context area 4. All three context areas do allow a mix of housing units from single-family to multiple-family, while also encouraging commercial uses. The application narrative provides a detailed review of the rezoning request and its consistency with the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. To summarize, there are several relevant goals and objectives that apply to this request. One is a housing variety, provide a variety of housing types across income levels at Sandpoint, encourage diversity in housing types by permitting detached duplex townhouse, stacked flats, ADUs, and other types as appropriate in land use districts. Help reduce homes' household transportation costs by locating housing near daily needs and land mixed densities in neighborhoods to provide for income diversity among neighborhood residents while ensuring that the bulk mass or scale of any individual development does not dominate a street. Goal H3, relevant to new neighborhoods, ensure that new neighborhoods provide the same charm and comfort as Sandpoint's historic neighborhoods. Neighborhood services, public open space, and parks shall be connected with multimodal paths. Development shall occur with a safe, appropriate street system and a network that provides easy access, but does not allow rapid or high-volume traffic to disrupt the neighborhood and encourage a variety of housing sizes within a block. Goal Transportation 1, walkability, make Sandpoint a walkable community. Plan for increased pedestrian and bicycle use both for recreation and as an important viable transportation alternative. Goal R1, parks, provide integrated and comprehensive park and recreation facilities to serve Sandpoint's needs. Link parks and recreation facilities with a network of safe paths, trails, and/or sidewalks. And goal R2, recreation, support recreation as an important component of Sandpoint community life, integrate parks and other public community spaces when considering development. The second request before you is for a planned development approval. Planned unit developments fall under Title 10, and pursuant to Title 10, Chapter 3, Section 1 of the code, a planned unit development is development of land in which the standard land use regulations may be modified or waived in order to promote beneficial development of an entire tract of land in conformance with an approved planned unit development permit that accentuates usable open space, recreational uses, public amenities, community housing, and a harmonious development with surrounding properties and the city at large. The request is a combined preliminary and final development plan rather than doing two separate approvals. This combines both preliminary and final. The final development plan provides 227 dwellings in a mix of single-family attached, which include the townhomes and the duplex lots, and four multifamily structures of 28 units each. The submittal materials included proposed elevations, floor plans, and overall landscaping. The PUD is proposed to be developed in four phases, with the first phase anticipated to begin in 2023, that is 4A on the phasing map, followed by 4B, which is the multifamily units closest to Boyer. 4C is continuation of the multifamily units, and then 4D would be built out of the townhouse lots. The proposed PUD zoning standards include numerous requested deviations from the RM district standards. Those were summarized in Table 1 and 2 of the staff report, and those fall into two different categories, one being deviations from design standards and the other from dimensional requirements. The requested waivers from the design standards for the duplexes and the townhomes include more than 50% of front wall as garage. That would apply to the proposed duplex lots, and then units without street-facing entrances. Some of the townhouse lots actually face the green space or a purely local drive. And then, design standard waivers for the multifamily buildings. There was a requested waiver from all requirements of Section 9423H, and those are additional standards applicable to multifamily structures to improve the appearance, quality, and functions of multifamily housing.
Amy, can you provide a little more specificity on that one?
Yes. The requirements for multifamily structures, because they are larger, it has requirements for facades to be broken up, the massing of the building, where ensuring that things like bike racks are in proximity to where the people will be accessing them. So there's just some additional requirements when you're dealing with a large, multiple-family building that are proposed. Requested dimensional standards include the building heights. In the RM district, the allowed height is 40 feet. The request is for the townhomes to be 45 feet, and the multifamily buildings to be 48 feet. Continued dimensional standard waivers would be the townhouse lots would have reduced minimum lot sizes and widths, reduced front-side rear yard setbacks, and increased impervious area. The exterior boundary reductions from 25-foot exterior boundary for the townhomes and multifamily buildings along North Boyer. And in addition, while it's not a requested waiver, the development does have significantly more parking than the code requires. As part of a PUD, there is requirement for open space, that is a minimum of 10% of the development gross area for this development that would total 63,162 square feet. The open spaces in this PUD will not be dedicated to the public but are proposed to be maintained by the relevant homeowners associations. Staff suggested changes to open space and need for additional details were incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval. And then, based on the discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, a revised open space plan has been submitted that incorporates elements of the conditions of approval and indicates the 10% minimum open space requirement is exceeded, but additional details are still needed that were included in the conditions of approval. This is an illustration of the updated open space concept. Again, there was discussion of increasing the size of the lot at the intersection of Ebbett Way and Heron Street. So that was this area is shown as larger, and then the area to the south, the apartment amenity was removed, and they're showing the concept for a pump track, which I will let the applicant explain. And then also discussion of the open space at the north end, and ensuring that that did connect to Boyer Avenue. Pursuant to Section, Title 10, Section 3. In making its decision on the final development plan, city council shall find that the fact submitted with final development plan establish that the proposed development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. That each individual unit of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as an independent unit capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability, or that adequate assurance will be provided if such objective will be attained. The use as proposed will not be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect which would not be achieved under standard zoning. The streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated multimodal traffic. That increased densities will not generate particular traffic in such amounts as to overload the street network outside the PUD, and that any impacts have been adequately mitigated. Any exception from standard zoning requirements is warranted by the design and other amenities incorporated into the final development plan in accordance with this chapter in the adopted policy of the city council. The PUD is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan, and the existing and proposed utility services are adequate for the population densities and non-residential uses proposed. The third request is for an amended preliminary plat. The preliminary plat with noted conditions is able to meet the standards of Sandpoint City Code 10, Section, Title 10, Section 1, Article 6. The traffic impact study undertaken with the overall development continues to be valid with the proposed uses generating less traffic than was originally proposed with the commercial uses on this property. And conditions have been added to address private maintenance and parking restrictions for the purely local drives. After holding a public hearing and deliberation, the Planning and Zoning Commission found that numerous conditions of approval were necessary for the three applications to meet the required standards for rezon, a PUD, final development plan, and preliminary plat. As noted, it appears some of the open space conditions have been addressed with the revised open space plan, but additional information continues to be needed and will be incorporated into the development agreement to be drafted and brought back for city council's consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission made its recommendation with 16 conditions of approval. The first is the applicant shall prepare codes, covenants, restrictions that establish one or more homeowners associations, and provide that the HOAs are responsible for the operation and maintenance of all common areas and open areas. and provide that the HOAs are responsible for the operation and maintenance of all common areas and open spaces. Incorporating detailed maintenance standards and provisions for maintenance of the same. The final stormwater management plan shall be developed in a manner that does not negatively affect the functionality of the open spaces or railroad corridor. The preliminary plat sheet five of seven dated June third of twenty twenty-two. That shows the purely local drives, the majority of the proposed accesses for block one qualify as purely local drives. Those do not provide through access and are generally short in length and serve a relatively limited number of blocks. Purely local drives shall be publicly dedicated but privately maintained right-of-way with a minimum width and configuration meeting the International Fire Code. The access south of lots fifty-nine through sixty-eight function as an alley and show me the same conditions as the purely local drives. The primary east-west access south of lots forty-eight, forty-six, forty-nine, fifty-two, fifty-five, fifty-eight, as well as a primary north-south access east of lots forty, thirty-five, thirty, twenty-five, do not qualify as purely local drives because they create a loop to access from the local street to the southern end. And therefore will need to meet the public right-of-way of fifty feet. The proposed preliminary plat reflects a right width of approximately forty-six feet along these two primary accesses. The construction documents and final plat shall reflect a minimum right-of-way. Provide functionality as a local street and enable necessary maintenance and snow storage. That shall be publicly maintained, no driveways, other than the purely local drives may access the local street. On-street parking on one side of the street will be permitted where the pavement is twenty-eight feet or more. And parking on both sides will require a pavement width of thirty-six feet or more. No parking shine, no parking signs shall be provided wherever these conditions are not met. The purely local drive shall be privately maintained, the final plat shall provide reference to the responsibility of maintenance and city-approved CCNRs incorporating detailed maintenance standards and provisions. The hammerhead turnarounds accessing townhouse lots must measure at least sixty feet in both directions from the center line. Due to the proximity of the residential development to the railroad tracks, exterior walls shall have a sound transmission class of not less than fifty or not less than forty-five if field-tested for airborne noise. Penetrations or openings and construction assemblies shall be sealed, lined, insulated, or otherwise treated to maintain required ratings. No lots may be sold and no building permits can be issued prior to final planning. Application for street names shall be made with Hunter County. Detailed plans for the open spaces incorporate incorporating staff recommended changes are provided and incorporated into the master development agreement. Detailed landscape plans, including size, type, location of plant material, automatic sprinklers, location and specifications for all build elements such as paths or benches shall be incorporated into the master development agreement. The proposed multifamily development on lots one through four block two shall meet the site design and building standards including, included in section nine four two three H of the Sandpoint City Code, excepting nine four two three H six that pertains to building height and nine four two three H seven that pertains to building orientation towards the street. Said revised plans and building design shall be reviewed at the building permit site plan review phase. The zoning standards table shall be amended to incorporate the requirements of condition twelve and incorporate it into the master development agreement. Other city codes in place at the time of building permit application shall apply. Modifications to the zoning standards table may only be approved through an amendment to the PewDie. In accordance with city code ten three ten one, the development shall be initiated within two years of the date of approval. The infrastructure construction and recording of the final plat shall occur within two years from the date of approval, the building construction and final certificates of occupancy shall occur in phases and will be completed within five years from the date of PewDie approval, as further described in condition in the master development. Fifteen, extension of the linear park pathway located at the north end of the townhouse lots. From Herring Avenue through the linear park and connect with Boyer Avenue rather than the current configuration with the path terminating in a parking lot to the west. And finally, expansion of the proposed eight thousand square foot open space at the corner of East Abbott and Herring Avenue to allow for creation of a focal point neighborhood park through the elimination or relocation of the proposed garage and parking lot to the south of the park area. And those two, the last two conditions of approval of the planning commission have somewhat been incorporated into the revised concept plan. And I'll let the applicant explain a little more about that.
Amy, can I ask you a question about condition number twelve, please, if you can go back one page? Thank you. So with regards to meeting the site design and building standards included in four two, nine four two three H, accepting nine four two three H six pertaining to building height and building orientation towards the street. So would that allow, would that condition still allow for the excess exceeding building height that was?
This would allow for the proposed forty-eight feet for multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
After receiving public comment and deliberation, City Council may take action to approve, postpone, or deny the three requests. The rezoning, the PewDie final development plan, and the amended preliminary plat for University Place based on findings of fact that the relevant standards of city code are met.
Amy, can I ask a question? Is it the same height as the Milltown apartments, is it approximately?
They're slightly, they're not as tall.
Okay.
As, but they are four stories, Milltown is also four stories.
Okay.
But I believe it's more than forty-eight feet because their ground floor is commercial space.
Okay, but it won't be egregious like this or it'll be pretty subtle, is that correct?
Yeah, it will be slightly shorter than the Milltown.
Okay, and then also, and I'm sure I probably know this, but I can't think of it right now. The purely local drives, is that just their driveway or is that the streets?
It's, it's the, it's the street.
Okay.
They are, go up to.
Within the development.
Right.
Okay.
Not the main Evan Herring, it's the, it's the streets within the townhouse lots.
Okay.
So these all qualify as, other than, this is what we're calling the local drive.
Okay.
Because that connects Abbott and Herring and it's more of a three-through street, but the, whoops, sorry. All of these almost alleyways that access the top, these are what are called purely local drives.
Okay.
So those will be publicly dedicated but privately maintained. Similar to the accesses that the townhouse acts or the big house accesses in Culver's Crossing.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
And will you have that map up? So the elimination, the condition requested by City Council, by Planning and Zoning Commission that would eliminate the or relocate the garage on the corner of Edgeway, East Edgeway. That I assume is the garage just north of the label, East Edgeway there, that would allow for connectivity, multimodal connectivity through that.
Actually, this is the revised, but if I went back up to, let's see, I have the overall. There was originally a garage, sorry. There's, if you look at, hopefully this won't jump, there was a garage located to the south of the proposed Toddlaugh. So that has been, that was what was recommended to be relocated so that that community focal point could be larger. And that has been incorporated into the revised plan.
Thank you. Does council have any, are you finished with your? Okay, does council have any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, I do. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask those questions or there's just so much information that I'm not clear if some of these things have been answered and I've just listened to you and I'm trying to keep it all straight in my head, but if it, if my questions need to go somewhere else, please direct me so that I don't slow down the process here.
You may get some of those answered with the applicant's presentation, so you may want to wait until after you hear from that.
Okay, and I will do it.
Okay, are we ready? Right, at this time, I would invite the applicant or, and or his or her representative to come forward and give us a presentation.
Okay, good evening. My name is Derek. Know several of you and had the pleasure of giving the A presentation on this development to Planning and Zoning and took their feedback very seriously. Looking forward to hearing your feedback as well. Took some of the feedback from the initial round of entitlements for this development a couple of years ago to heart and I think you'll see some of that incorporated into this plan. So we'll, we'll move along, I give you a little outline here of what I've. My presentation won't be nearly as detailed as Amy's, I really appreciate Amy the very thorough review you've given and all the support and feedback the city has given me through this process, so want to make you guys aware of that. I want to give you a little history about this project, refreshing some folks' memories. Why we're requesting a planned unit development. The townhomes and its fee simple nature. During the presentation, I'll introduce our builder partner, Williams Communities. This, this entire project is one architect, one builder, very cohesive. Something that I don't think we've had to this scale in the city limits at least. There's a mix of product for sale, there's a mix of rental product, so talk about the duplexes and the apartments specifically. The zone change from what's currently zoned as single-family to multifamily. An amendment to an already approved preliminary plat that we've been installing infrastructure and and the integrated feedback that I received from planning and zoning that we changed in the, in the site plan. And I want to highlight those to you all. This is the former University of Idaho agricultural site entitled and winner of twenty twenty. The single-family phase completed in summer of twenty-one fifty residential lots. How many are under construction? So twenty-two vertical at this time of the, of the fifty, so that's kind of, kind of in the middle of the development on Boyer. The right-of-way for phase four completed, almost completed this summer and the corresponding stubs for infrastructure for this, this application. The Boyer improvements. The curb finally just went down the other day, thankfully. I was getting nervous, I'm sure Amanda was too. And Scott Woods will get that thing paved so we can put that to bed, but the Boyer improvements were complete this year. We're here today for a zone change, single-family, multifamily, the PewDie and amendment to that already approved preliminary plat. So a lot in one meeting, a lot to digest, I mean, the application is huge. Welcome, questions, feedback throughout this, this process. Again, just giving you a little bit of history, so here's my ownership piece here in red. Those are the fifty single-family lots that now Williams Communities is deploying vertical construction on. Here's the phase four, already approved preliminary plat and on the right-hand side is what we're asking for via the PewDie. So you've got a mix of fee simple townhomes, duplexes, and apartment complex, four buildings, hundred and twelve units. The contemplated phasing and then there's phasing within a phase, which I'll get to. But why a PewDie? Currently, the minimum lot size for townhome lots in the city standpoint per the code is thirty-five hundred square feet. I forget what the, the road frontage requirement is, I think it's twenty-five feet. There's no way to build a really efficient multifamily attached product. So that is one of the drivers, being fee simple, meaning this isn't a condo. As the developer providing individual sewer and water services to every single one of those lots just allows for a diverse range of financing options, which would otherwise not be achieved if it's a condominium complex. You're typically vacation, second home folks. The financing, some banks won't even lend to a condo project, so this opens up, I think, and hits hits a different price point and a different level of affordability because we get efficiency through the build and they're smaller lots. And, but they are fee simple, they're not condoed. The condo path is a, is a really, quite frankly, it's a lot easier path than going through this process. There's a lot more, you know, engineering and surveying and cost to install those individual sewer and water services to every single lot. I share that with you not to pat my back, just to, to make sure you understand the intent behind offering something different here and at scale. Want to point out that the overall density that we propose here is, is not more than the current multifamily zone allows. So sometimes, you know, you get a step up in, in density in a PewDie, we're not asking for that. In fact, we redid a traffic study and it actually lowered the number of trips. And then we can't meet all the RM standard code for the application or sorry for the apartment, so that's another reason to do the planned unit development. As Amy pointed out, here's your comprehensive plan. There is no single family on this. It's a variety of, of uses, being residential dominated, here's our current zoning, which is all single-family and the proposed is multifamily. And via the PewDie, you can do mixed use, we've got some mini storage for the apartments proposed and then through feedback from planning and zoning, we eliminated kind of the potential neighborhood commercial in favor of expanding open space as, as they wish to see. So we incorporated those changes and I'll, I'll get to those as well. So here's, here's the original proposed site plan. The garage unit that was being pointed out, we relocated that to the south to make that focal park a lot larger and also allow for, there was concerns, safety concern, being able to see the park. And so I thought that was a perfectly valid condition and it was easy enough to move that garage and expand that park area. There was a condition to connect the linear park to Boyer. There's actually two other connection points, I think I failed to kind of point that out in the application and you might be straining your eyes there, Kate, but I'll, I'll zoom in on some of this stuff to kind of highlight this, you won't have to take it all in right at the moment. That's my little cue because I can't figure out how to get this document in here. So here's kind of the highlights from our landscape architect incorporating the changes from, from the planning and zoning meeting. So we connected the linear park to the multimodal path on Boyer. There's actually a connection point here and here. And we even added one here that's not shown, I'll show you it on the final plan. We eliminated this building here, which was a neighborhood commercial, this is now all open space down here. This garage is now located right here and trying to remember, I think I hit the high points there. Here is the new plan, let me zoom in here. So now this open space and the elimination of this building down here is I, I got, I can't quite remember if it was our parks director had talked about the popularity of pump tracks, I'm a, you know, avid skier and outdoorsman, bike cycling has never been in my wheelhouse, I've always wondered why. You know, avid skier and outdoorsman by cycling has never been in my wheelhouse. I've always wondered why. You know, being an adventure junkie, I haven't taken it up, especially mountain biking and I should. But these are, these are popular all over the place. So. I thought, you know, we had already built this massive sound attenuation berm from the spoils from the right away. Boy, what a great idea. And that feedback was well received on my end, not only to provide something, an amenity like this to this neighborhood, but I I think it'll be a draw for. Kids all over town, at least I hope it is. And it drastically expanded the amount of open space because some of that feedback was, you know, we were just shy of the 10%. You know, Amy and I had our 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 little disputes on what you would count as open space. I was counting this space in here. And you know, between the townhomes, because you can meander through there. The city really wanted to concentrate on the open space designated to to park. And so we more than meet it or 30%. In fact, I think 38% if you count. You know, all the different thoroughfares between the apartment buildings and the actual park amenities, the linear park, the toddler's park and the pump park. And if you exclude those things, we still way exceed the the 10% minimum requirement. So just in in kind of summary of what those amenities are. Pump track incorporating the burn that's already there. This is a toddler's park. So anticipating, you know, fall resistant material on the ground. If if any of you have been to any of the Providence Park downtown Riverfront Spokane. Or I forget the other one. That's right, right over the way. Just think of amenities and features like that. Tactile things for kids to play with visual stimulation, tactile stimulation. This linear park is just. You know, benches, pathways, landscaping, shrub shrubs. There's a. This intentionally, you know, was set back here. I forget the distance now. I think it was 47 feet. Then we saved every sub alpine fur on the property. So U of I did a really interesting thing. They sub alpine firs are are fairly. What do you say? They're they're finicky finicky species. And so they cross them to harden the species. You know, when it's brought out of their high alpine environment and they are some harsh trees because. We relocated them in record temperatures and I can tell you that I spent. Unbelievable amount of money watering those things last summer and I think we only lost three, but I I bring that to your attention too, just. From the standpoint of of trying to preserve some of the the history there. The 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 Christmas tree folks still come harvest those trees from those the ones that are planted over by the lift station that we built for the city. Those have been that planted, I think, back in the 70s. Those sub alpine firs were transplanted to provide really a buffer because you have a. A a three story townhome product, you know, just north of this and the those 50 lots, right? You didn't want to have those townhomes just staring in the backyard of those residential lots. So the there's the landscape buffer with the. Very mature established sub alpine firs and then there these townhomes are set back by that linear park. I think it's 46 or 7 feet. There's a little park like amenity here again benches and landscaping. In this section with some parking for visitors and. The trail connectivity, which was really important to me because I remember. In planning and zoning, the first go around, I didn't have the opportunity to to present to you all, but the what stuck out was. The importance of designing a neighborhood around pedestrians and cyclists. There's thoroughfares and connectivity and easy ways to meander through a development out to a trail or out to a local street. Not necessarily always thinking about developing around vehicles. Took that to heart. Another comment that was made was design a community that that isn't that's faced outward rather than in and and quarantined off and. You know. Boyer to me is a it's it's a busy arterial. But what a shame if you did just have. Mile long or several mile long, you know, vinyl fence the entire way. So. Again, taking some of that feedback and incorporating into this application was was really important. Let's put those houses up on the street, make them feel like they're part of the rest of the community in the neighborhood. There's a wonderful trail system right out their front door, but then let's also. Have it be designed in such a way that there's just easy access permeability through the development. It doesn't look like a gated community that nobody can get into. And I think that will help drive some of these while they aren't public parks, but I envision that especially the pump pump park. I think it's going to be quite an attraction for. The entire community, not just this development. I want to get into. Some of the elevations. This is a proposed. Elevation of one of the apartment buildings. The target market here is build the most efficient apartment building. So you can rent it for something reasonable. That is the game and that's workforce housing. I don't really like the term affordable housing. I I think it's way overused. You need to just build something that meets that market and the the best way to do that is do it four levels. Don't put an elevator in it. Don't put a membrane roof on it, you know, put trust roof. So that's that's how we arrive at this. It's simple, but there's still ways to make this look. Decent. So there's a couple of different roof options and I plan to kind of vary those throughout the four buildings. So one's a split shed. Here's the side elevation. And and again, and and you guys hit on it and referenced. What what was approved in the condition here was height and orientation. So this this no longer is the front of the building. This is. This is the side, but it actually, it would be. Determined as the front based on it, its orientation. So that was that was approved through these conditions, but I asked for more of a blanket approval, which was. Partly because, you know, it's hard to to really get these things completely final designed before coming in front of you all. I mean. To to do that, you got to consult with first civil, your architectural team, then back to structural and then your mechanical plumbing. And once you're down that path, you're spending thousands and thousands of dollars. I wanted to just give a very nice illustration of what this building would look like and then say, hey. You know, we probably can't meet every one of these code standards, but it'll be a darn nice looking building. And so I think staff was was very thorough and thoughtful and the fact that, yeah, we're not going to just approve a blanket, you know, waiver to the whole thing. But the orientation and height are just part of the equation. You know, the projections, some of the landscape buffering requirements, some of the parking requirements. Within the multifamily zone and, you know, we'll 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 have to have some, we'll hopefully, based on your approval, have to have some laxation of that. In order to achieve it, some of it is inherent in the site plan and in these elevations. And then other things, you know, aren't because there maybe something's not dimensioned and it's not fully designed. We'll get into that because my my summary of this presentation is kind of going through these conditions and just letting you know where where we met. And then where I'd like a little more flexibility. I think you'll find it's 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 fairly benign and and pretty straightforward, actually. More on the apartment. So just simplicity back to something that architecturally, you know, doesn't doesn't look like a. A box with vinyl siding, you know, this is metal and hardy plank panels. It's it's they're good materials. But but you keep things simple without elaborate, you know, projections and funky designs, no elevator. Simple roof line and there are things in the code that don't don't let that happen like that. Broad face there. I don't. I don't believe our residential multifamily code allows for that. So I'll get into those those conditions. Let me show you some. Elevations of. The townhomes and I'd like to introduce Williams homes just because. I think that those guys have done a fantastic job. They've hired, you know, mostly all local people where they can, especially subcontractors. Two young guys as project managers. So let me give you kind of an intro to some of their product. Here's your conceptual Boyer Avenue. Elevation. Again, you know, these these homes, the front doors are facing out towards Boyer. They're not facing inwards with a fence behind them. There's, I think, five different plans, you know, so they they vary tremendously architecturally. And elevation wise too, I'll show you a. A few of these different buildings. I think there's three, five unit, a seven unit building, and then there's some units that have right here. Here it is. Give you some height differentiation. So some are, you know, the ends are maybe a little wider with two levels and in the middle, they're three level. So you don't have everything, you know, the same. Again, I think I I give a lot of credit to the architects and this team that I'll introduce to you. This is really a master planned, really cohesive development, and I don't think we've really seen that. And yet it's still not in this. Custom luxury, you know, department that wouldn't be accessible to hopefully the majority. Let me show you a little bit about the duplexes. You know, we did a lot of work. Here to to make sure that while their. Garage front and that's that's typically frowned upon and 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 I agree, you know, the the last thing you want to see is two garages in the the living space all behind it. So, you know, we we made it made them two level and they have projections. They have little balconies. The the garages like for the, for example, this one, this one looks like it's actually integrated into the siding. So. I think the architects did a great job. Why we did that? The the lots that they're situated on, you know, are such that they allow for. You know, where the right away comes down from the previous development, they allow for really large private rear backyards. And so if you think about the mix of product here, fee simple townhomes. That could be, that could be starter home, first foot, first time home buyer. That could be empty nester. It could be downsizer. This could be. The family that doesn't want to be in an apartment building, but yet quite isn't ready maybe to buy a house. I think that having private rear yards is really important for those folks and a and a and a significant draw. It could be somebody relocating their family to take a job with one of the larger employers that just hasn't. You know, had the time to commit to buying. Especially in this interest rate environment, but. A product I think that feels like a single family home, but yet is still attached is what we were going for here. With the efficiency and having, you know, if you had those garages on the side, let's say you you could get half the number of units, you'd have conflict in a shared driveway. It'd be a disaster from a. A management standpoint. So again, I I just, I want to point those things out because they're important. In the fact that there's a lot of thought that goes into the backend design and in in this product. So. I hit on the townhomes, I hit the duplexes, I showed you some apartment elevations. I think what I want to do is introduce Dave or Scott or both, whichever of you guys. Our vertical partner and have him, you know, give you a little background on Williams Communities and and the work that they've done thus far.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff. I just want to thank you for your time this evening. I know these make for very long days when you have council meetings and. It's a it's a very important part of the community at Sandpoint and I appreciate all of your efforts and in hearing us tonight. My name is Dave Little. I'm the chief operating officer for Williams Homes and also the division president in the state of Idaho. And so we are actively building the 49 single family homes that are adjacent to this project. We have, as Derek said, we have 22 of those homes stick framed at this point or further. We've got another 14 units that are either slabbed or excavated and our goal is to get. Probably another phase to concrete before winter. So the site is well maintained and and the lots are covered at that point. So good progress on that front. It's been a great experience being in this community. We're excited to get our first two units to sale, which we did last week. And we're excited to be a part of this next project. We have been working together with Derek on the site plan here. For the townhome project, the duplex project and the apartment project. We have utilized some of our. Really top notch consultants that do work for us around the country. The townhome project here was modeled after a very similar project in another community that was really well received and fit it fit a product niche. In that community on the on the affordability range. I know I'm with Derek on the word affordability is. Kind of lost its meaning in in our modern vernacular, but. What it provides in this community is a niche product. I think that we don't have today. Certainly not in scale and that is you've got some really high end lakefront attached. We've got some older duplex stock in town that trades periodically, but not very frequently. But we really don't have a a new fresh product that's got the architectural styling and 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 movement. That these units all have, whether it's the duplexes or the townhomes. And it it'll at a price point that'll allow us to be to attract that move first time or first time move up buyer on the townhome side. And as Derek says. Perhaps a rental occupant in the rest of the community. So I feel like this is a well positioned project for Sandpoint. And where you guys are in your product lifecycle here in town. It will provide for some growth that will allow. You know, those who want to be closer to Schweitzer and the and the quaintness of of Sandpoint to 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 get to. Residency here gives them really close access to the bike path that gets into town and the. You know, you see kayaks launch from that into that street adjacent to us all summer to kayak into the city beach. So I think in terms of that. That trail and outdoor access and outdoor lifestyle, I feel like this hits on all those cylinders really well. Williams Homes has been in business for 26 years. We've been building homes for families in areas with strong outdoor lifestyles. And so we are large. We have a large presence in Montana. In fact, we're the largest production builder in Montana. We're in Idaho, we're in Texas and we're in California as well. We've expanded our operations in the in Idaho and Montana considerably in the last couple of years and and Sandpoint is. Was that first point on our stop in Idaho because we love what you have to offer here. So it just appreciate your time. I I encourage you to listen to the rest of Derek's presentation and give us any questions you might have. So thank you.
Thanks for that, Dave. Okay. Back here. To the site plan. I'm sure this will. Will keep this up just to reference. For questions, but I think at, you know, at this time, I want to really go through these conditions. Many of them very reasonable, frankly, and just give you my opinion about them. Number one, CCNRs, that's that's standard order of business. Number two, same thing, no, no issues. Number three. You know, we didn't. So this this concept of purely like local drives and what qualifies and what doesn't. The the city was really accommodating and and helping me understand. The code, but then how to, you know, essentially make sure that. From you all, it doesn't look like a gross overreach. So there's a lot there. Really, this is, it's easy to meet. I think it was four feet. Amy, is that correct? That we needed is 46 currently in the application. I forget the number. It was four, four additional feet for right away for the. That we that you requested. Oh, maybe it's maybe three points. Yeah, yeah. So from from my perspective, you know, again. You know, some of these things aren't hills to die on. you know, some of these things aren't hills to die on. This thoroughfare through here, you know, needs to widen, call it four feet. So these townhomes here scoot back four feet. And these units, actually, I think we have it here. And if we didn't, they could easily, just these two buildings, you'd lose four feet in here. So if you have questions about, about that, you know, I, I rest assured, you know, we're, th- these are, that's a reasonable condition. From my perspective. Number four, on-street parking, parking on one side permitted or pavement width of twenty eight feet. No parking signs, you know, there might, there might be during site plan review discussion of, well, you know, if we eliminate this parking, you know, do we have a sidewalk on one side versus the other? You know, these are things that are, that come up during that process that that condition is, is fine. Purely local drives are privately maintained per the HOA CCNRs. Hammerhead turnabouts, these are, this is all life safety stuff. So that's already been incorporated. Number seven, due to proximity residential development railroad tracks, exterior walls have sound transmission data class of less than fifty. You know, my, 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 my ask of you all is that this condition be, be removed. There's no code to support that requirement. And it isn't that I don't care immensely about the residents of that, that building. It's a very expensive endeavor. And I feel like we that sound attenuation berm was meant to mitigate that and you know, selfishly someday I hope to, to see the city pursue a quiet crossing at, at Boyer. I think that's, that's a pretty annoying spot, but that's in the future. Not part of this discussion, obviously, but want you to understand that that is, that's something that would add architectural and cost to, to this building, which we're trying to build an efficient building to keep the rents within a modulation. So that condition. I, I, my proposal would be or ask would be to, to remove it. Eight and nine are, are standard. Ten, the staff recommendations and changes and the planning and zoning recommendations, you know, I think we, we met all of them. We relocated that garage. We connected to Boyer. Not one, but three times through the linear park. We expanded the open space dramatically, well beyond the, the ten percent requirement. So I think that we've done a good job there. I hope you all feel the same. Number eleven, detailed landscape plans. That's, that's standard. Number twelve. The multi-family development lots on one through four block twelve should meet the design and building standards, including in nine dash four dash two dash three. The, this is essentially allowing for height and orientation and not anything else. My ask, I think, would be to just have some language in here that allows me to work with the city staff with these specific elevations and the specific site plan. And as long as it's, it's within the intent of what I proposed, which do have floor plans and it's dimensioned that I not have to come back and amend the PUD. That's, that's something that, you know, what I've learned through these processes is that it's one thing to get this stuff approved and then it's another body of work to, behind the scenes for, for both applicant and city to kind of go back and forth on this stuff. And their job and responsibility frankly is to make sure that, you know, what it says very black and white here, the developer does, and that's what they should be doing. But this particular condition within the spirit of this application and the intent, I just, I need a little more flexibility. Give you examples, you know, projections, do they fall every thirty feet? No. You know, it's like every forty two feet. There's a fifteen foot landscape buffer required to the parking lots. You know, we're at nine. It's on the site plan. The, and there's the elevations show you, for example, the roof line's not broken up. So again, that condition specifically, while I'm extremely appreciative of the work gone into to approve height and orientation, because that would have been a total game over. Just with the way that the topography on this account, this, uh, this site sits, the buildings were best pressed up against EBIT. So if you flip them the other way, right, you'd get two of them in there instead of four. So that, that's in simplicity, that's why they're oriented the other way. So that's condition number, number twelve. Thirteen is the table Amy referenced with the other waivers related to the standard code. And number fourteen, I think, is just been a, this isn't fault of anyone. Maybe it's even a lack of oversight on, on, on my application was the two years of date of approval. I just, I'd like to modify that to the the, it's, it reads the infrastructure construction and recording of final platter occur within two years of data approval. That is a lot of infrastructure to put in, in two years. And so I just wanted to hopefully get some latitude to have the infrastructure be installed in that five year, which is really the intent. And we really don't know the building process and how much absorption can, can take place. So just flexibility on the infrastructure and final plating would be, you know, much appreciated because two years is a, is a really narrow window. And again, I, I think that's more of a miss on my part in the application. It wasn't clear. And then we, uh, number fifteen, the extension of the linear park pathway to connect to Boyer. Let's see. Yep. That, that was done. And there's, like I mentioned, there's another connection to Boyer right here. And right here, and you can get into the pump track over the berm as well. So there's a lot more connections to, to Boyer in the multimodal path. That's so in sixteen, expansion of the proposed eight thousand square foot open space in the corner. So by relocating that job, we, or that garage to down here, which also safety and the park getting bigger and eliminating this building, we, we met by a mile, that ten percent minimum open requirement. So those, those conditions have been met and revised since the planning and zoning meeting. That really kind of sums up and concludes my presentation unless I'm forgetting anything, but I'd love to get feedback or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mogru. Really appreciate that thorough presentation and Mr. Little as well. Appreciate that. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So Derek, thank you. I, in reviewing the PNZ and watching the meeting, I believe you to come across very humble and honest and genuine with what you want to do with that piece of property. That piece of property has, uh, there, there's a lot of passion to that. And I think, I think the takeaway from this is that you've listened to the community, you've listened to staff. I do, it, it does look like a really good product and a fit for that spot. I think that maybe the, the sound proving component, I think that you, I, I understand the, the financial aspect of it. But I, I really do think that that's going to be a selling point for this, this area. Very similar to the pump track and the, the tot lot. I think that I, I understand what you're, what you're expressing. This with the variety of product that you're going to have here, the variety of individuals that are are potentially going to be looking at this will deeply appreciate the investment that you chose to put in and understand that it, it wasn't cheaply just thrown up, that it was thoughtfully built with them in consideration. You considered the children in the playset, so you'll consider the children in their bedroom while they're trying to sleep as well. So I, I genuinely believe that you're here humbly asking for a really good product.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Um, I know that you have a berm there, correct, for sound mitigation? So have you done any sound tests on that?
We haven't, no.
Okay.
Um, I think there's some studies that are out there on, on berms. Which I could have pulled those, you know, but the reality is it only goes fourteen feet tall. This building's, you know, forty eight feet tall, well, to the, to the top. So you know, the, the likelihood of that blocking all the sound for the upper levels or, you know, just using logic is probably, you know, not, not the case, right?
Well, and I concur with Councilman Grove simply because I get a lot of calls saying, oh, even from homeowners, right? That they knew when they purchased the home that it was by the railroad tracks about, you need to do something about the noise and you, it's like, well, the trail, the trains have been here forever. So we can't move the trains out of town. I would also, I'm, I'm conflicted by this because I really am an advocate for the low wage earners. And I dislike the word affordable too. So thank you for that. That's a perspective word. But we really need something for the people forty five thousand and below. You know, because I have young friends out there who aren't qualifying for low income, which I can't wrap my mind around. How you don't qualify for low income when you are low income, but it's all, it's all about money. So I'm hoping that these will be an answer because we are losing our young people. We are losing individuals who, you know, work our retail and our restaurants. And, and so I'm very concerned about this. I'm very excited about this project. I also think you're a very genuine person and I, I also listen to PNZ and I'm really happy about the expansion of the park, the tot lot. I thought that was a funny way to put it. And the pump track, I really like that too. But so I guess, is the pump track going to add expense? Because I know you were, we were talking about that, but and what in the, is, will that be in the HOAs that the, they have to take care of it?
I think what's proposed, what the condition here is that the, the HOA would take care of all this. The pump track is, I have not built one. But they're dirt and we, we've got a lot of dirt and, and clay is great for those tracks. So
Right.
I don't think that's going to be a tremendous cost.
Well, and if Maeve helped you, then I'm sure that it's, you know, that it's done correctly. So I just have a question about, so I know there's going to be approximately five hundred and six people, is that right? Or units in here?
I think it was two twenty seven. Is that right?
Yeah, it was, it was basically taking our average household size multiplied by the number of units.
Right. Yeah. So how are the trips less?
Oh, good question. The first traffic study we did really was a kind of a dart in the dark on what this could be. And it's also due to my lack of experience playing developers, I call it. But, uh, you know, I, I thought, oh, we'll, we'll have this huge retail corridor here. And, you know, that drives a tremendous amount of trips and multifamily. A single family drives a lot of trips too. And multifamily, you get kind of a modifier for that. So when you take out those, that retail center and you convert from single family to multifamily, the trips, the net trips are lower. So we actually have a more favorable than, than originally studied.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is it, do I need to wait to ask staff questions or can I ask staff?
No, you, you can.
Um, so Amy, um, on condition fourteen about the two years, so could it be amended? Like if it is impossible to do in two years, could it be amended? But if they amend it, would they have to come back to city council and would there be a cost to the developer?
The code requirement is that constructions start within two years.
Okay.
Part of the PUD code in section ten, three, ten, it's actually ten, three, ten, H one. And that is, that is that it's initiated. We went off with the completion within five years based on the phasing plan that was submitted.
Okay.
So that the five years certainly could be adjusted, but the starting within two years is the requirement of the beauty.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
And we, we did start already too, because remember, we had a preliminary approval for this phase four. So that infrastructure has been going in this year. So that meets that requirement. Again, that this, that particular ask had probably more to do with my application than it did staff. So.
And so that, just to continue on that thought, Amy, do you see any conflict with code or any unforeseen problems perhaps by this body that could arise if we were to grant that request for waiving the the two-year approval and the five-year completion for infrastructure and final plating?
Well, the final plat likely would be recorded within two years, but the five years, I don't, if, if that needs to be extended, I don't think that's an issue. The recording of the flat, the infrastructure, you can't record the plant without the infrastructure, but I, I guess I would if council is thinking they want to change that, that we work on that through the development agreement. And then that would come back to you for final approval.
Okay. Funded, funded, do you see any problems with that?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other questions for Mr. Mogru this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Sure. Derek, thanks for being here tonight. And thanks for taking to heart the feedback that you heard almost three years ago in the original planning and zoning meetings. I'm personally really excited about this development. Some of the variances to multifamily design standards, dimensional standards, I think are warranted. Especially with regards to the orientation of the townhomes towards Boyer. I think you, you nailed it that our community is going to really appreciate that aspect of this when this development is completed, that these residents will be able to walk out their front doors and be on a bike path, a skateboard path, a roller blade path, a walking path where they can be at, you know, super one in five minutes or, you know, all the way into town in ten or fifteen minutes. It's, it's going to be a great amenity. Along with many of the other amenities you have in this plan, I think are, are really warranted. I gotta think back to my questions here. So the the other, I think, really great changes that were included since the planning and zoning meeting in September. Enlarging the tot lot and incorporating more than just open space there. I heard more than one planning zoning commissioner urge you and express concerns about, is this just going to be another green space with nothing to do? And the idea that there's actually going to be some play structures there. And I've been to these parks you described in Spokane with my daughter and she has a blast at them. So I really actually am going to suggest that we add a little bit of language to condition number ten about the plans for the open spaces so that it's more than just a, you know, what we call a fuzzy watercolor. And it's actually a little bit more solidified what you will actually do at the side of the tot lot and at the side of the pump track. I'm not sure if you're aware, you're not a cyclist, so maybe you didn't know this, but before this property was sold, in fact, up until the year that it was sold, this was the home of the Sandpoint Cyclocross Series, which ran for seven years on this property. There's one point eight miles of established trail on this property for, for bicyclists in particular. So to have this as a legacy of that history on the property, I think is extremely exciting. And it's, it's something that I think Sandpoint desperately needs, a, a good place for kids to ride bikes. We're getting a beautiful new skate park at Travers Park. There are concepts in our parks plan for a pump track. To have this be kind of a private public partnership is something I'm super excited about. I do have to correct you on one thing though, modern pump tracks are not made out of only dirt. They are covered in asphalt. And that is something I want to put into this condition as well, that this is a modern asphalt pump track. And the benefit for you and for your future residents is almost zero maintenance over, over time, whereas a purely dirt pump track will be very expensive to maintain and require lots of labor hours every year and excavator time just to keep it open year after year. So I know you're committed to quality in this whole development, this whole project. The Williams designs are quite appealing to me. Actually, I really love them. So just as you're investing in the quality of the rest of your infrastructure here and your buildings. I'd like to see this condition require a quality investment in that pump track and assure public access from the Boyer multi-use pathway. I love the linear park. I actually walked it today. I, I parked across the street and walked all the way through this development and it, it really is wonderful what you did with the trees there, transplanting those trees. It already looks like a park. So to see that developed is going to be really nice. In the planning and zoning hearing, there was some discussion about the In the planning and zoning hearing, there was some discussion about the, uh, initial preliminary plat. Two and a half years ago, including, you know, connectivity to the waterfront. I know that's not relevant to this development, cause that connectivity would have to happen further north. But this almost steps stands in for, for what was described in that origin, original plan. Um, because you've got that kind of green corridor from Boyer, um, out to Haring Street where there is gonna be a beautiful sidewalk. And I can see people enjoying a walk around this whole development. Um, one other addition I'm hoping to include, uh, along with the path from Boyer to the pump track location. I think connecting that southeast perimeter, uh, with a path from the pump track to the tot lot. Would be a really wonderful idea for, uh, the kids who wanna move between the two play areas. Uh, I do see that there's really no way to access one or from the other unless a, a kid presumably on a bike. Or on roller blades or a, you know, a skateboard or something, um, crosses a busy parking lot. So having, i- if the space permits, having a, a, a hard surface pathway from the top lot around behind that large apartment building. And around the storage units in the southeast corner, connecting to the eleven thousand, seven hundred, uh, square foot, sorry, forty one thousand, seven hundred square foot. Um, contract location, I think would be a wonderful addition as well. So, uh, those are some of my thoughts. Um, again, very exciting development and, um. I'm excited to continue to see it develop in the, in the coming years, but I, I, I am hoping to, uh, include some more robust language about the. Investment in those open spaces that you've incorporated into the plan.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Can I comment on? The last suggestion, um, for that connection. That's where the majority of our stormwater traverse is there and so kind of relocating that from that tot lock area. Um, there's already storm infrastructure that goes down that corridor there and there'll be a huge swale for retention. Um, while I like that idea. It, on this design, it just, it just isn't possible because that infrastructure is already there and it. It, the outlet is, uh, under the railroad tracks. There's a huge culvert underneath there that everything goes and displaces out. So, okay, I just wanted to. If that was a condition, it would conflict with condition, um, two. Uh, which is the stormwater management. Uh, but I, but I appreciate the feedback. Um. Um, you mentioned public-private partnerships. I mean, uh, it, it is a, asphalt's always more expensive. I'm not opposed to doing something that's quality for, for sure. Um, maybe there's a discussion of a true public-private partnership on the pump track. That takes some of the maintenance burden off of me as the developer. If that's on the table, then I, I'd love to pursue those conversations. Uh, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, that, uh, storm infrastructure that would prohibit us from connecting the two there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would did wonder about that. I was at the site today and it. As, as gentle as it is, it certainly slopes in that direction.
Yeah, but thank you for your, for your comments.
Thanks.
And, and the one thing that I heard missed in there that, uh, the councilman brought up was. Um, assuring public access from Boyer to the pump track there, which already is clearly shown in the concept here. Um, but I don't think it is explicit in the conditions, but, um. I don't, it sounds like obviously we'd never have a problem with that if that was included.
Yeah, we, we, we added that just cause it, I thought it made logical sense. Most folks getting to the pump track aren't, well, actually you'd, you'd know Jason. I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe you are putting the bike on the car and then parking. But I would think, uh, due to its proximity to that trail, people would be riding in. So I thought access along where it was. Was something that would just be nice. And I don't even think that came from P and Z. That was just kind of common sense. So that, that is there and, and there is, you know, connectivity to Boyer through these townhome locations too. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Hey Derek, thank you, uh, for being here and appreciate the presentation from yourself and your partner with us. I truly like the variety of housing that's going up as well as the amount of inventory. I think we can all, well. If we can all agree, but inventory is a large part of affordability at some point in some, sometime. With, uh, this project here, I appreciate the feedback and the changes that you made after the planning and zoning and a large kudos to our, uh, planning and zoning team as well too. I think they were able to ferret out, uh, a lot of questions and a lot of facts with the project as well. And I think you really took that to heart and we see that today. Uh, a couple of questions for me that I'm, I'm unclear on here or there, and I may have missed it in the reading or in the meeting. Uh, is there a turn lane, uh, either going northbound or southbound on Boyer to get into the? Um, and does that have to do with the traffic study that Mr. Mrs. McAllister had raised earlier?
That's correct. Yeah. So we, we widened the road, um, this last year and then we just need to restripe it for that turn lane.
Okay. And then on, uh, the condition number seven here on the exterior walls, the sound tra- sound transmission class. Can you arrow through where those walls would go? Does that border the entire property?
Well, that's a, so the, um, the comments about the sound transmission are, I take it completely to heart. If, if that's left in here, it's, it's vague as it is. You know, that would be my next question would be. You know, what, wh- where, would it just be this building here that's, to me logically, the closest to the tracks? The building that's, um, oriented north-south along Boyer and would it just be the exterior? And maybe the unit, so the units in the, would be, you know, south and westerly orientation. And, um, or would it just be floors, three and floor? Because those would be missed by the sound attenuation berm. I don't know, um, be- because the, the, there is no. Adopted code that supports this. If left, it's extremely vague. So some guidance on it, if it's important to. Uh, to you all to, to leave it here, some, some specifics would be helpful for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think there needs to be some more information for us and for staff to, to know the extent to which soundproofing would be beneficial in this development. Um, and I'm not sure, Amy, did, did, is this something that? Was considered when that condition was written, would this soundproofing be required in every structure in the whole development? Would it be just one structure? Would it be the multifamily or the apartment structures?
The way it's written, I don't think I know. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure if Amy can talk about that, but.
Intent was for the multifamily structures all adjacent to the rail. Um, and for a little clarity, the building already has to have interior wall, sound attenuation. But the code does not require that on the exterior wall. So simply providing the same sound attenuation, but that has to be put in between the units. On the exterior wall. Would, if it, it, and there's different, um. Mechanisms to do so, but it is not a different system. It is what is, will already be required within the structure. Because you have to attenuate sound between units. But the code doesn't require it for the wall, the exterior wall. So it would be that southern wall facing the tracks. Would have that same, and you'd need the building official to explain it to you in depth, but, um. That, it's, it isn't that much different than what would be, you know. So those sound attenuating materials will be part of the building construction currently. So it would just be adding it to that southerly wall. And that is up against the tracks.
So you're referring just only to the apartment buildings?
Right.
And just the southern base?
So in other words, the sides of the apartment buildings? Okay.
So is number seven redundant then? Is it necessary to be in here? Yeah. So my, my two cents not to take this back to me again. I think that the P and Z did a really good job with this. Like, uh, I, I can appreciate the, the extra additions if, if necessary, and I, I appreciate, uh, your input with. But this is, this is written down for a reason, you know, and it's to us for a reason. I, I think that everyone, the, to current, everyone has done a great job with what is presented.
Right. So to be clear, we're just asking them to put the, um, same product on the ends so that it will be soundproof, correct? So it really had nothing to do with outside, like the berm or whatever. It's just the, okay, cool.
And possibly just on the third and fourth floor.
Yeah.
Depending on.
Okay. And those specifics will be worked out. Thank you.
Do you mind if I comment on that? Uh, just so, just from my understanding, the, the, the suggestion is these, these sides of the buildings here only. Is that, is that what the condition is specific to?
And the whole south side of the east, easternmost building, it would be the whole south face of that.
This entire south face. Okay. Um, this is, this is a lot further away from that track. And this track is, you know, not really used and they don't blow a horn here. The horn is blown here. What about just clarifying this condition to include these three buildings? And just the south-facing aspects of those three buildings. Exterior sheathing on buildings, whether it's sound attenuation or fire, is extremely expensive. It's, it's not one to be, to take in, take in lightly. It, I, I understand the, the importance. Selfishly, like I, like I mentioned, that this is unrelated to the, the application. I, someday that's gonna be a quiet crossing. And that money just was completely wasted. That's just my honest opinion. I, and I do care about the, the, the resident's wellbeing. If it needs to be there from your perspectives, complete respect that, would just ask on those three buildings specify the south side. That would be the, the ask.
When it, it sounds like, um, the, the recommendation is, um, to have a sound engineer. Evaluate this and determine, uh, how successful that berm is. And it may not be necessary on the first and second floor at all on those south-facing walls. Um, but that would be up for the, the sound engineer to make that determination. And then, you know, he may, or she may or may not determine on that fourth building, whether or not any is, is necessary or not. So I think the recommendation that I'm hearing from the, from staff is that, um, there'd be, uh, a study done. Um, that, that you are, um, responsible for and then bringing the results of those back would, um. Result in, you know, the, the detailed conditions that you're seeking, you know, clarity on, that would become part of the PewDie, uh, agreement. Is that, is that reasonable?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I do. It's just the way it's currently written is, is really vague. So I think it's, you know, in the spirit of. Uh, you know, when you get into those discussions, if there isn't some guide, guardrails put on that, it, it just. Again, that this, this requirement i- is not required in all jurisdictions. This one doesn't require. Our jurisdiction does not require this soundproofing. As Amy pointed out, it's required between units. That's standard, um, but not on the exterior. So. Um, I, I think, uh, again, I just would leave it with, you know, put some brackets on it i- if you could. It would be my only request, but, but Fonda, you're, you're a hundred percent right too. This is, this is gonna get hashed out in the, in the master development agreement. So.
Counsel, any further questions for our applicant?
Yes, I'm last, but the best thing about being last is so many of the questions have been answered by the rest of my wonderful councilmates, shall we say. Um, so. Where do we go? Okay, lots of questions. Which ones? Um, there was, so there's some confusion again, because we all know there was tons of information. Um, multifamily units, we had sort of, um, Amy mentioned at one point, there was a little bit of a blanket about the different codes and the conditions. Being removed and one of my big concerns is bike racks and such. And so I'm not sure how that's gonna work and I'm mostly concerned with the multifamily units. Um, because it sounds like that is something that is in our code. And I would like to see in that case that there's more of a specific d- detail that that does not get taken out. Um, then, um, I'm pleased because our, our one goal that was read at the beginning of the minute. Meeting talks about more developed parks, um, usable, appealing, safe and connected. And it seems like in your revisions that you've accomplished that. So thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for facing this community to the street. I think that's a lovely thing. I had a couple of concerns about the townhomes that, um. Are just north of, um, Ebbett Way that face Boyer. Um, because when I looked at the drawings, there's no rear entry doors. And so, um, I guess I'm thinking about if you have visitors or family or people coming. Um, they can't pa- park on Boyer. So where does that extra parking happen? And then how do those individuals access those buildings? Do they then walk through the green spaces around to the front? I don't know if that's design flaw or if I was just like, well, you know, if grandma comes over, what does she do? Um, so if you could answer that question.
Are you talking about right here?
There or the next unit, set of units, uh, kind of there, because from what I understand with the width of the roadway, you will not be able to park on the road there. Is that, that's correct? There will be no parking in those hammerheads. So then where do? I'm concerned that we could run into a problem where, you know, friends may come over and park and block other access for other people. Or for fire or whatnot. So.
It's a, it's a valid concern. Communities like this where they're kind of, uh, stacked in, um. You know, one of the, the trade-off here is like, you know, for example, I think the code requires like tandem garages or, or, uh. Inline garages and they, these, each unit has two spaces. Um, so that's, as Amy mentioned, we're overparked for the entire thing. It's hard because if you start adding that kind of parking on the local drives, if you could. Um, now all of a sudden you just got bigger streets.
Well, I'm not saying we should, but I'm just, is there so?
Sure.
Over in the other area where the spots are in the northernmost aspect. So that's kind of visitor parking and then. Or parking, um, along the access into Boyer. So it, are, is there also gonna be parking in that northernmost turnaround area?
Uh, I think here, you know, here, I mean, you can park on the street.
Okay.
Um, you know, we had some parking here, but that, you know, to make a little more green space and punch that path through. I mean, you know, this.
Would there be space to parallel park there? Or that's not wide enough, actually?
I don't think it was. That's what they revised.
All right. I won't linger that point. I just kind of had some questions about how people would access or where they would park. But I guess they will eventually figure that out. Um, uh, let's see. I, for the most part, really love the effort put into and the design of the time, townhomes. And the design of the multifamilies, um, and, um, the cohesiveness of, you know, making this a very walkable neighborhood. I think it will be. And the cohesiveness of, you know, making this a very walkable neighborhood. I think it will be a wonderful asset for standpoint. And there's been a lot of thought put into it. But I still am struggling with the garage front townhomes. I know there's some, you know, different elevations and stuff like that. But to me, the, or not the townhomes, but these duplexes, I misspoke, apologize, are going to be very garage front. Not very welcoming. I don't believe that the side porches and the overhangs fix that. And I think that they look pretty good in the drawings with the watercolor, shall we say. But I don't know that they're actually going to present on the street. And it sounds like we have a team of pretty amazing builders and architects. So I'm a little bit disappointed that even though they integrated the siding and different things like that, that they couldn't do a little bit better job with these duplexes. Even possibly taking, instead of having an overhanging porch, maybe having a carport and a single car garage and then having a porch on the front that is more welcoming and would connect these duplexes to the community as opposed to having very private backyards and separating these families from the community. That's, I was on planning commission when we made a lot of these standards. We talked a lot about this. Another piece of this is that by building the duplexes that way, you take the eyes off the street. So then that becomes some safety issues because people don't usually sit in their upstairs bedroom and look out the window. They usually have those blinds closed. So it's when you're in your living room or your kitchen and that window may face the street that you're interacting more with your community. So in general, I love the whole thing, but I'm a bit disappointed in that. And I think I'm not an architect, but I've seen some pretty amazing buildings. And, and because of sitting on the planning commission and doing this, I'm always looking and I'm always paying attention, whether I'm in Boise or Eagle or wherever I'm driving to see that building that they really hit it out of the park. And I've seen some better designs with duplexes. So they do exist. My computer turned off. Got to turn it back on. Then, let's see. Okay. So back to the multifamily, my final comment would be that I'm not sure what purpose. And this may be because of fire engine regulations or some other thing. Why you have the drive through with the little roundabout and the tree, other than for aesthetic purposes there? And so my suggestion, if this is not a, a fire code type of piece, would be why not make this, get rid of the pavement and take the money we're gonna spend on that pavement and pave the pump track. And turn this into a nice green space for the people that maybe don't want to hang out with the tots or the teenagers, but the adults that actually live in these four apartment buildings, you give them a nice space. Maybe you put up a little gazebo, some art door barbecues and make it pleasant for the adults that live in this complex. And the other piece of that is pavement, we're over paved, you've said that yourself. And pavement, as we know, is a heat sink. And so I think you're gonna create a problem there. So more green space is gonna cool the area better. And we have a lot of pavement around these multifamily complexes here. So those would be my comments. And then I believe the sound engineers and such will give us the best possible option. And I trust that staff will work with you to make it the expense doable for you to achieve the, the best for everyone, because I do trust them. And I believe that, or those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I appreciate it. If you want, if you allow me to comment on the, the duplexes specifically, I mean, you brought up parking in the, the townhomes, right? So I mean, this is, this is a, it's a trade off, you know, so. We live in a community with snow and I have a young family. I want a garage and I want direct access to the house from the garage. That's a personal preference. So I think the architects did, and I totally respect that, that you don't, did a wonderful job making sure that that elevation incorporated with garages in the front, in order to preserve a private rear yard. You know, I just, I just want to bring that up again, just to, just to take a peek. And here it is, right here. There's two of them. You mentioned carports, you know, I just don't think that that provides adequate, you know, weatherproofing for, for, again, for the, for the target. I think the target is a, is a young family or it's somebody moving here, taking a job, that's not ready to commit to being here and buy in. Those garages are important. Some of them have windows in them while you're not going to stand in the garage and, and look out. I, I appreciate the security comment. Blinds may be drawn in the front because it is facing the street, but pulling the second floor, you know, up above and providing projections and some, and a porch and some things to, to add, architectural movement is, is incorporated here. And it's just, I guess I just stressed that it's, it's a trade off. And, and unfortunately with those lots and the location, this is kind of the best product that we could, we could come up with for that particular location. But not lost on me and I.
We'll just have to agree to disagree. And I'm okay with that.
That's okay. That's okay. But I appreciate it. And the other comments too, and, and the accolades are very much appreciated on the design.
Can you comment on the, the roundabout piece?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd never really thought about the roundabout. I thought the roundabout was really, really nice. It makes, you know, a lot of, a lot of these types of apartments, you know, you, you enter them. You, you know, you, and there isn't a designated entrance and it's really hard to figure out where the heck you are, you know, building A, B, C or 1, 2, 3, 4. So I think that this was incorporated is like, let's have a designated entrance and make it feel a little nicer. That's why that roundabout's there and there'd be some landscaping in it. But if, if you folks felt that it shouldn't be there, you know, that's, that's fine too, I guess. I, I thought it was a, a pretty nice entrance, you know, for, for the development. And it, it makes apartment complex not feel like such an apartment complex is, would just be my comment on that.
I guess to just reframe that, that creating a nice little walking path with the same thing that you created in the other courtyard areas within the townhomes just would seem on a bigger scale to make sense to me there.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a place where we could meet, for example, like the 15 foot landscaping buffer, you know, that could be met on that side of the building. But this side of the building and this side of the building, we couldn't. So maybe that's the trade off. Again, not opposed to it. I, I think the designers came up with that and, and it was.
Just watercolor?
Yep.
Okay. So not a fire regulation. Thank you.
No.
The, the driveway doesn't need to be there.
The.
The road, the entrance road does.
Between the two buildings, so that there's two entrances into the multifamily complex, so that cannot.
Right. We can't eliminate.
Okay. You cannot eliminate the two acts. And that was my question. And it's not in the other parking area because the entrance was considered to be too close to Boyer off of East Ebbett.
We tried to get it as far from Boyer as possible.
Conflict in traffic. Okay. All right. That explains that.
I may have misheard you. Were you talking specifically about the roundabout where the entrance altogether?
The entire road.
Gotcha. Okay. Fair enough.
Okay. I, I think Deb addressed the building standards a little bit, but there was a request from, a request from Mr. Mogru on condition number 12. And I haven't really heard a response from council members, but I would invite you to consider that request. And if you want to make any comments specific to that request, I think that might be valuable to see if we can come up with some kind of moderation. And, and as I recall, it was essentially to allow the applicant to work with staff on the building standards without having to revise a PUD at some point in the future.
I, I will comment.
Yeah. Yeah, that works. Any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mogru.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay. The public hearing will now open. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, who would like to testify in favor, in favor of the application?
No one has signed up to speak during the public hearing.
Okay. So to clarify, no one has signed up to speak in favor. No one has signed up to speak who is neutral and no one has signed up to speak who is opposed.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And maybe everyone's listening. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Would you have one member of the public, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Let them know that this is their last opportunity to comment during this public hearing. And just to be clear, no one here wishes to speak on the proposal. Then that concludes our public hearing. Oh, but, and I, I guess you don't need to rebut, so we can skip that part. So no new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. Please note that before taking action, city council should make findings of fact regarding each of the three separate items. The rezoning from the residential single family to residential multifamily, the combined PUD preliminary and final development plans, and the amended preliminary plat. Council will now deliberate.
Mr. Mayor, just to go back to that piece, I think, were you talking about building standards for the multifamily buildings as far as facades and shapes and no blank walls and et cetera and so on?
Yeah. And there is the, the require, or the code requires a 15 foot landscape buffer and, and the, in the proposal, the minimum is nine on the tighter, tighter sides there.
Okay. So you, that was landscaping buffer. So I guess my biggest concern, this is probably a request or a question for Amy, is that we're talking about the facades and some of our code, the way it was, maybe didn't allow for the straight roof lines and stuff like that. I guess my biggest concern would be blank walls and such. And so I guess I would rely on staff, which would be you, and maybe Christine some, to make sure that we're getting a product that closely resembles the watercolors we're getting as opposed to drastic changes. That's always my fear. After having done this for many years, we get a watercolor and we end up with something that is far different. I mean, if there's small give and takes, I have no problem with that. If we're changing a little bit of buffer, I think this applicant has shown that he's making a great effort to give us grass in other places. And then I believe Jason has taken the lead on making sure we have more details put into the parks pieces. And I know we have that line in there that tells us all about every single little tiny plant in the landscaping piece. And I would like the same sort of language, so to speak, in our parks piece, like exactly what are we getting so that we know? And the applicant also understands that so that we don't have conflict later with, you know, our vision of these top parks and then maybe what the applicant's vision was and then what we end up with on the ground. So I want us, everybody to be happy and understand what those details are. I guess that would be most of my comments or questions for staff or directions. So, or if we have to make motions or include that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you mind? Go ahead.
Amy, I have now, I think, 92 tabs open on my browser with various documents related to this application. I'm wondering if you have the, I think, seven areas of standards that are being asked for variances on, in this PUD application in a single slide somewhere, where we can just have a quick look. You mentioned bike racks. I don't remember reading anything about bike racks in the staff report. So I want to make sure we know what, I've heard you describe this as a give and take. I, I want to make sure we all are very clear in what we're giving in terms of, you know, allowing variances from our code. Do you have those summarized somewhere for us?
I don't know that I have. So what you're asking is what are those details in the multifamily district that we would be working with him?
I've heard everything from peaked roofs versus flat roofs to 48 feet versus 40 feet versus 45 feet to 15 foot setbacks versus 25 foot setbacks versus nine foot setbacks to bike racks, to road widths, to, I mean, there's so many things that.
I agree.
I can't really wrap my head around what they all are. And you, when you did, I think, mention most of them in your initial presentation, but I'm having a hard time seeing them all in one place. Or do you?
So just to clarify, are you, is the question, what are the requested deviations?
Yes.
Or what are the requirements for the?
No. What are the requested deviations from the requirements under our multifamily?
I will find that.
Specific, yeah. Thank you, Counselor Welker. I don't want to get rid of the baby with the bathwater.
So there are. There were the general requested deviations, both the design and the dimensional. Or were you referring to the table in the staff report?
So these two under duplex and townhomes, that's good. That's what I wanted. Those are specific deviations. And then, but under multifamily buildings, you just say waivers from requirements. Could you pull up that line of code where those additional standards that are being asked to be waived are?
Yes.
I just think it's really important that we know what we're giving up as we allow these deviations from code.
Sorry. They are, but this, I believe what the, the question is, what are the actual code requirements?
No, I think the table, if you could pull up the table, that would be fine.
The table from the staff report. Okay, sorry.
And again, I know I've looked at it at some point, but in all these tabs, I, I'm sorry, I just can't find it. Okay, perfect.
So for the zoning. There's table one. So the deviations for the townhouse lots on minimum lot size, there is requested waiver. The minimum lot width. The minimum front yard setback goes from 15 to zero. Minimum rear yard goes from 15 to, between zero and 14 feet, 3, 14.3 feet. Minimum side yard is required five, required zero. Garage setback 25 zeros, that's a reduction of 25 feet. Maximum height of 40 feet. Townhouses are 45 feet, increase of five feet in height. Maximum impervious area maximum is 80%. Requested 100% for the townhouse lots. Design standards, percent of front wall is garage, maximum is 50%. Request is 100% for a 50% increase. Main entrance facing the street is a requirement. About half of them are facing the street and 51% are not, but they are facing either a courtyard or a garage facade only.
Amy, can I interrupt you? So that was one of my specific questions. So I know that there's only a small number of duplexes, but in the multifamily units, is that's how we're getting that number up to 50 or the 49%?
The townhouse lots.
Not the duplexes.
So the townhouse lots don't have.
So if you.
Oh, because. Oh, because some of them face the courtyards, whereas the private, what I consider to be alleyways.
Or they face green.
They don't space the alleyway, they face green space. Okay, so, okay, courtyard or have garage. Okay, all right, thank you. Makes sense now.
Parking required, one hundred and forty-one, two hundred and ten spaces provided, which is forty-nine percent over requirement. The duplex lots, there are no requested deviations on lot sizes or setback. The garage setback is requesting a five-foot reduction. Maximum height is within allowance, maximum purpose areas and with allowance. The percent of front walls as garage code allows fifty percent, the duplexes are sixty-nine percent or nineteen percent. Main entrance facing is required. These have entrances to the side. And then the percent of windows facing the streets, they meet the requirement, and they are a hundred percent over the parking required. Then for the multifamily, one of the lots is slightly smaller than would be required for the number of units. Lot two is slightly narrower than the code would allow. Front, front yard, minimum front rear side are all met, garage setback, they don't have the garages. Max on height is, there is an eight foot excess of eight feet over the code allowance. And then the parking is eighty-eight percent over the required amount. So those are all, that's a summary of all of the requested waivers through the PUD.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Amy.
Mister Mayor, have a comment? So, oh, you got rid of the chart. Sorry, that was very whiny. Again, the last piece on there just mentions the elevations and all that, and then in your other box, it says insufficient information. So, design standards for the multifamily, design waiver per elevation drawing, and then insufficient information, so in the rest of this process, are we going to have more detailed information, so then when this finally comes back to us, we will again know exactly what product we're getting?
That, that is referring to the condition that the standard be met. We didn't have enough information to determine if the standard was met, so that would be reviewed at site plan review. Should the requirement be met, or that condition remain? If the direction of council is that staff work with the applicant to have some flexibility over those requirements that could come back, but I think the way we worded is, is that it would be, we would review it for compliance at the building permit site plan phase.
Okay, so there will be another time where there will be more work done with staff to, okay, okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Yeah.
If, if nobody else has anything to add at this time, before we make a motion, I, well, maybe I'm about to make a motion, actually.
Oh, I had, sorry, Jason.
You have some more?
Well, I did want, I had a question for Maeve. I would, since she's our Parks professional, if she feels like this, the changes that are now made, that we've seen with pump track and everything else, if, if in her opinion, she feels like this is adequate, and if she feels comfortable with having, just as our landscaping requires, that our parks will require that she could just speak to that a little bit, so I can hear her professional.
Sure, thank you for this opportunity to speak on the open space in the parks, Counselor Rule. I did review this and provide extensive feedback to the team, and what I'm seeing now is still an underdeveloped landscape plan, so I I understand that the next step is that they will refine this plan with more detail. That detail will provide some more clarity on what we're seeing here. So, while it is much closer to the intent of my comments, and it does meet the requirements of the open space for the square footage and the connectivity, I think some more detail as to what the elements are. For example, the tot lot, that phrases in reference to a specific age group, and in proper professional playground design, you need to have a certain amount of square footage for different age groups, and then it needs to be delineated by the, the equipment for the age, say, zero to three, would be toddler age, and then the, or it's really zero to five, but there's often a zero to three in there, and then five to twelve is another standard playground age requirement. So, it sounds like the way that they were presenting it, that they're headed in that direction. So, my understanding is that we will more detail in the, when the conditions are met, and so through this process. So I do have a lot of comfort from the progress, and also I do feel as though Derek has made a very strong effort to try and connect with me to learn more and talk about that, and I have to give him credit for that. I've been very busy and not, not been able to share too much time with him beyond what he's asked. So, I think that he is trying, and it is fair to say that, and I do really recognize that his team has pivoted quite quickly from my responses. I will say that the connectivity that Jason brought up, I hadn't thought of that, the connection, the non-motorized connection, or the bike, whatever you want to call it, pedestrian connection that would go from the pump track to the south to the playground tot lot area. It would be great to see that addressed through the parking lot or sidewalks. I'd like to know how the kids are gonna cross in front of traffic, or if there's any connectivity considered in there, but I do believe that that would be addressed in the site plan. And Amy, I would defer to you. Am I correct? The next round of the site plan, we would see such level of detail. And then also the bike racks, all of those are things that we'd be looking for, the bike racks and the seating, and those are all things that we talked about. It's, the idea would be to see that in the next round, as well as the level of detail in the trees, and that was very specifically related to along Boyer. The team has already, or the developer has already done a significant effort of planting crab apples along the tree, but I'm looking for dimensions and specifications on that. I did, I did express concern about having fruit-bearing trees along multi-use pathway that we have to maintain, that the city maintains. And so, you know, I haven't seen the dimensions yet, and I anticipate seeing that as well. But, yeah.
We do have, sort of, from what I understand, we in our landscaping stuff have certain trees that are approved and not approved, and so that would kind of be your department now, correct?
Correct. I wear a couple hats here, for those of you that don't know, and also the city forester and noxious weed coordinator, so under those roles, you know, those are all part of being a landscape architect, so they do, it does fit with my career twice in my role here, so I do have some experience with it. Rest assured that I am looking at it through that lens. But for the last year, I have been working also as the city forester, and I'm quite versed in what the, what the recommendations are for the town. We don't have any set guidelines for this area, but in my recommendations that I provided, Derek, I gave him places where he could refer. So we do have an arbiculture arbiculture manual, which makes recommendations for street, street trees, their size, their height.
So, all those details will be taken care of then, and does?
Provided with all that.
Okay, to get back to the parks piece, not to interrupt you, I just don't want to make this meeting go till ten o'clock. We would, do we need to then make a motion, which I'm guessing Jason is gonna work, saying that we need specific details included? So I'm gonna hand that off to you.
That is what I was going to suggest. In fact, this might simplify things a little bit, because two of the conditions that were added by planning and zoning, I think, relate to this topic. That's fifteen and sixteen, which referred to the extension of the linear park pathway in the north end of the townhouse lots. That relates to open space, which condition ten is all about. Current sixteen, current, current condition number sixteen is about the expansion of the proposed eight thousand square foot open space at the corner. That's the tot lot. That is now expanded to, where is it headed in front of me? Eleven thousand square feet or something, so that's been addressed as well. My proposed motion is to amend condition number ten, to make it a little bit more robust, to bring it into line with some of the other conditions in here relating to everything from soundproofing to a street width to landscaping plan. So, what I would like to do is make a motion to amend, to strike conditions fifteen and sixteen, roll them into condition ten, and amend condition ten to read detailed plans for the open spaces incorporated staff recommendation, recommended changes. Those have already been incorporated, in fact, are provided and incorporated into the master development plan. Such plans shall include the following. And this is, like I mentioned to Mister Mulgrew in my initial comments, just to assure that we get more than just a green space in these two locations, something that truly is an amenity for the residents of this development, but also for the public, because I think part of any PUD is the give and take. So we're asking now for what, what is our community going to get in, in exchange for the multiple variances that we're granting to this developer? So, these, this condition, by making it more robust, is going to incur additional costs, but the benefit for the residents and for the community, I think, in the long run will far exceed the cost that the developer incurs in meeting these conditions. So, such plans shall include the following: a children's playground, including city staff-approved play structures in the tot lot, the eleven thousand nine hundred square foot tot lot. An asphalt pump track designed to be, designed to be approved by city parks planning staff in the forty-one thousand square foot area. And a paved, this was not in the conditions, so this is a new one, a paved pedestrian bicycle pathway from the north Boyer shared use path on the south end of the development. And then we're gonna roll in number fifteen, which is the extension of the linear park pathway to Boyer. And one more thing that has not been mentioned at all tonight, but I, I'm not even sure the developers thought of this. Dogway stations throughout the development. I think this is something, you're gonna have dozens and dozens of dogs, dog owners living in this development. So just incorporating that, making sure that's something that is included in the final development plan. Again, I love the connectivity in the parks aspect of this, the open space aspect, the focus of that in this development, but we know any open spaces are gonna be quickly ruined by dog waste if we don't have that in a final development plan. So just adding something about dog bins to be maintained by the HOA, like the other amenities that you're providing. So, that's my motion to add those four things: children's playground approved by city staff, asphalt pump track approved by city staff, paved bike path on the south end of the property, which was not in the conditions, rolling in the paved pathway on the north end of the property, and then a dog waste plan for the whole property. Any comments or questions?
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded in discussion?
Do you need to add the, removing fifteen and sixteen?
The motion would be to remove fifteen and sixteen and amend ten to include those two things.
I guess my comment back to you, Jason, would be, does it absolutely need to be paved on the south end?
Can we clarify what you mean by that south?
It's in the plan that they've drawn, but it's not described in the conditions. So they added to, they extended the linear park out to Boyer, and he added a path from Boyer to the pump track location. Only one of those was described in the conditions. I'm saying, let's also describe the pathway from, on the south end of the property as well. So, that might have been an oversight. Yeah, and in fact, I think it was Derek who said that was his idea to include that connectivity. He said, why not connect it?
You did not include in your motion that your suggested pathway from the tot lot running south.
No, I've removed that, because I understand the stormwater issues there. I agree with Maeve that having perhaps a crosswalk through the parking area, some, some way for kids to safely get from one or the other, but I totally understand, like, to try, we're not gonna build a elevated bridge or something. It's, the cost would be prohibitive with the stormwater issues there. So I've removed that recommendation, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure the south pathway you were talking about.
No, that's just from the pump track to Boyer.
So, just as a point of discussion, we have a lot of impervious surface in here. Does every single pathway need to be an impervious surface? Just putting that out there for discussion. Sometimes, you know, the dog owner might appreciate, you know, less pavement, especially in summer months or something like that.
Personally, my concern is accessibility in these cases, and I mean, the, your presentation showed all these beautiful pictures of, you know, the kinds of open spaces that you envisioned. They all included paved pathways, and that's really important for accessibility for, you know, wheelchair-bound individuals, plus multiple.
Back at the physical therapist?
Multiple wheel users, of course, if, an asphalt pump track would be appealing to skateboarders and to rollerbladers, and to people on scooters. They can't get there if it's an, if it's a gravel path. Any other questions?
So our, our Parks Director does, I'm sorry, I get the words all wrong. Parks Planning and Development Manager does have authority over the decision-making with regards to the asphalt versus gravel and the, the type of surface on the pathways, to keep that in mind. And that will be evaluated by her as we move into the master development.
Yeah, and I tried to include that authority in my language by saying, to be approved by Sandpoint City Parks Planning Staff.
I got lost somewhere.
You don't remember all the details?
No.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
Want to make a point of clarification. Remember, the request is three, there's three requests, so you need to take action on the rezoning first, followed by the final development plan, which the conditions of approval were attached to that action, and then the plat.
So I think what he's trying to do is amend right now the language of the proposed conditions before rolling into those three.
Okay.
It's confusing.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The only thing that motion did was change the list of proposed conditions.
Yes.
Yeah. So, if we can move on, unless there's any other proposed, and we can stay on this path, if there's any other proposed motions toward the conditions, changes in the conditions. If everybody's comfortable with where we're at in the conditions, we'll move on to the main, what I will call the main motion, the first one, anyway. So, I would, are we good? We're good? But entertain a motion after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint city code. The Sandpoint city code approved the ordinance to rezone the property owned by M. and W. Holdings LLC and described as all of that portion of Lot Two, Block One of the University Place, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Book Seventeen of Platts, page fifty-three, records of Bonner County, Idaho, lying south of the south boundary of the plat of the University Place Phase Two, A, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Book Seventeen of Platts, page fifty-four, records of Bonner County, Idaho, from RS, single-family to RM, residential multifamily, based on the following findings: one, the proposed zone change is in conformance with the future land use map and other policies within the comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed RM zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning, zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. Three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision. providing public services within the planning jurisdiction. And four, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho code sixty seven dash six five one one in the Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine. Is there a motion?
Second.
They moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would just like, since we are doing the zone change to, or while we're contemplating it at this point, to bring up the point that Becky Myers made about our schools overflowing. And I guess I would ask staff that, that's a county issue, is that correct in deciding whether or not to build more schools or not build more schools? That's not a city based.
School district.
That's a, that's a voter issue. If the district puts forth, puts forth a, a facilities levy, then that's how that gets done.
Okay.
So maybe that's something Becky's working on, but.
Okay, I just, I mean, I think as we change what was here, you know, I don't know that it really affects our decision, but.
Well, we've talked about, I mean, maybe not in this setting, but in planning and zoning, when I was on it, we, we have talked about one of the issues and challenges that school districts face in Idaho is this, the fact that development impact fees don't go towards schools here. So there's very little the city can do to support the expansion of schools, but that's left to the voters through the, the levy.
Okay, well, thank you for helping clarify that for me, but I mean, I know we don't have control of all things, but I like to have an awareness of those things.
Jennifer?
Mr. Mayor, I think the point that the superintendent is trying to make is that there isn't any school, any land set aside. The school district doesn't own any land within or the location of another school. My understanding is the desire by the school district at some point in time to address the growing population would be another school within city limits. And so I think the point is the set aside of land that would allow or dedication of land that would allow for a school to be built in city limits.
And is, so where Fonda is the legal piece of that, that's.
Councilor Walker explained it perfectly.
In, in, in her last school district, Lakeland, the developer of one of the very large lots down in Rathrum, did dedicate ten acres of land to the school district.
Usually it's getting a private landowner to dedicate land within, okay.
Well, not usually, that's.
That's between the.
Landowner. Right, right, absolutely. I just wondered how the process happened. It doesn't affect us here, I understand that, but.
But just for process and clarification of the record, Superintendent Meyer did not speak during the public hearing tonight. You have a written comment in your packet as public commentary from the school district, but she spoke during our open forum, not during the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, was it Councilor Walker or Councilor Dick who made the motion?
I think both of them.
Not, not me.
No, no.
It was.
Andy made it, and I think I seconded, no?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Thank you.
It was a free for all.
One of us.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Council Grove?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Zone change is approved. I would entertain a motion that the Sandpoint City Council approved the request by M and W Holdings LLC for a planned unit development, final development plan for University Place Phase Four, described as all of that portion of lot two, block one of the university place.
Mayor, my apologies for the interruption. We do need to approve the ordinance to the ordinance approval procedure. On page six in the middle.
My apologies. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows, an ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending the zoning classification of the property described in section one below from residential single family to residential multifamily, providing for amendment to the official zoning map to reflect this change. Finding that the new zone is in accord with the Sandpoint comprehensive plan, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in section one are hereby superseded and providing for publication in an effective date. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will entertain a motion that the ordinance passes its first reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the ordinance passes first reading by title only. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yep.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Grove?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes, the ordinance has passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring two separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety, be suspended. The ordinance passed its second and third readings under suspension of the rules, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded, this will be a roll call vote.
Council Grove?
Yes.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Motion passed, and this ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. Now, I would entertain a motion that the Sandpoint City Council approved the request by Eminem Holdings LLC for a planning and development, final development plan for University Place Phase Four, described as all of that portion of lot two, block one of University Place, according to the plat thereof, recorded in book seventeen of Platts, page fifty three, records of Bonner County, Idaho, lying south of the south boundary of the plat of University Place, Phase Two A, according to the plat thereof, recorded in book seventeen of Platts, page fifty four, records of Bonner County, Idaho, with the planning and zoning commission recommended conditions. Well, actually amended conditions as presented and approved by this body. I guess it'd be one through fourteen now. This motion is based on the findings provided through the submittal materials, staff report, and testimony that with the above conditions, the applicant establishes that pursuant to Idaho, to city code ten dash three dash ten dash H, the proposed development can be initiated within two years of the date of approval. Each individual unit of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as an independent unit capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability, or that adequate assurance will be provided that such objective will be attained. The use as proposed will not be detrimental to the present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect, which would not be achieved under, under standard zoning regulations. Number three, the streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated multimodal traffic. That increased densities will not generate vehicular traffic in such amounts as to overload the street network outside the PUD. And that any impacts have been adequately mitigated. Number four, any proposed, proposed commercial development can be justified at the locations present. That one is not applicable in this case. Number five, any exception from the, from standard zoning requirements is warranted by the design and other amenities incorporated in the final development plan in accordance with this chapter in the adopted policy of the Sandpoint City Council. The PUD is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. And lastly, the existing and proposed utility services are adequate for population densities and non-residential uses proposed. Any further that staff, any further that staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to planning and developments contained Idaho code sixty seven dash six five one two and Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do have to apologize, I did forget one element of my proposed amendment, so I'm not sure if this requires another amendment, but one thing I do want to make sure is that these public open space, sorry, open space improvements that are described in my proposed amendment are completed in the phases of the project in which they are, in which they are located. So that would mean the top lot is completed with phase four A, phase one, which is four A in your proposal, and that the pump track location is completed with phase four C. And finally, the linear park in the north of the property is completed with phase four D. Just to assure that this is not all pushed to the end and that parks and open spaces are given the same priority that residences are in this development. Maybe I should ask Fonda, does this warrant an additional amendment?
Well, first of all, this is not a phased project, you've been presented with a preliminary plat.
Oh, so is this later on then? Okay.
How they intend to do it, but they've not applied for a phased project. Number two, these are not public spaces.
I, that's why I, I apologize, I meant to say open spaces, yes.
They're just open spaces. So you would have no need to put additional requirements on the phasing unless they come back with an amended preliminary plat for a phase.
Okay, so this would be for, I mean, his, the presentation included four phases, that's why I was using that language.
Their internal phases.
I see. Okay, so this is not necessary.
Not a phased preliminary approach.
Then I have no further, no further.
Then I would have a question related to things have to be initiated within two years, but don't have to be completed for that five year timeframe?
That was something we're going to be working out with through the development agreement, is what the actual phasing will be.
Okay, and so maybe that plays into what Mr. Welker is, the intent of what he's trying to say, that if this happens to play out and take longer than five years, that these open space areas don't get pushed to the absolute end. So I don't know how you want to maybe address it within that, Jason?
Amy?
Fonda?
Wait until you see the language of the development agreement.
Okay, so we can do that at a later time, okay.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Fonda, appreciate that. All right, we have a motion in a second, so it'll be a roll call vote.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Grove?
Yes.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I would entertain a motion that Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho code and Sandpoint City code, approved the request by M and W Holdings LLC to amend the preliminary plat for University Place. This motion is based on findings provided through the submittal materials, staff report, and testimony that, one, the application is in substantial compliance with the subdivision and zoning requirements in the Sandpoint City Code for the following justification. The deviations from the subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements are allowed through the PUD approval process as stated in Title Ten, Chapter One, Section Six, and Chapter Three. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the overall planning goals and objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. This proposal was processed in compliance with the Sandpoint City Code Title Nine, Chapter Nine dash five for hearing procedures. Is there a motion?
They moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Council Rule?
Yes.
Council Grove?
Yes.
Council McAllister?
Yes.
Council Dick?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations, gentlemen, good luck on the development, it's an excellent project. And with that.
Nope, we have more.
We have more.
But we can.
We're not done.
You can't be late, you don't get to leave early.
Oh, I'm sorry. No removal. Are we sure we want to do that?
Oh.
Well, it's, it's a very timely item tonight, because there's snow in Prime Street Woods.
Okay.
Can we take a short break?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take three minutes, three and a half, four minutes here.
Okay.
It's option to propose revised snow removal policy. Staff will also provide a presentation on related draft code amendments. With no action requested on the code amendments this evening, I'll now yield the floor to Infrastructure Development Services Director Amanda Wilson. Thank you, Amanda, for joining us late this evening.
You're welcome, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. So while I might be going through this PowerPoint presentation and leading the discussion, Chief Coop is also here this evening with to this discussion.
I didn't recognize him in the blazer back there.
Fancy and stuff.
Mr. Mayor, item eight A, the snow removal policy, the requested action is to consider approving the revised snow removal policy by resolution. Just to clarify, the policy is intended to define expectations of city services, as our code is really intended to define the expectations of the property owners and the visitors within our community. So we've divided the two various components into a policy versus code, and I'll discuss that a little bit further. As the mayor stated, we are not requesting any approval for code amendments this evening, but because they are so closely related to the policy, we felt it important to present them as a draft tonight to get any feedback that you may have, and we'll bring forward a proposed ordinance at your next meeting. This is an overview of tonight's presentation. I've been asked to keep it to three minutes, that might be a little challenging, but I will do my best to be brief. Background, the contents of your staff report, as I'm sure all of you recognized, were quite extensive, there were many pages there. So I will just highlight that, for the record, that you had a link to the workshop that we conducted with city council on October fourth to really go into more depth on our conversation this evening. You received all of the public feedback, all three hundred plus pages of every comment and all of the data that was generated from that survey. So thank you for your patience with the volume of it, I really appreciate the community's efforts to give us that thorough feedback and want to make sure we communicate that we did read them, we have heard them. You also received the current snow policy that was adopted by resolution, as well as the proposed changes, both via track changes and incorporated. We've revised the priority map, and then, as mentioned before, we included some draft conditions for amendments to code. Last but not least, for reference, you received a guiding document by the Federal Highway Administration. This document was provided to you just for a sake of reference in the, in support that our challenges with enforcing sidewalk removal, snow removal, as well as just overall maintenance of sidewalks, is a nationwide, universal challenge that we all struggle to get creative and find ways to improve. So it was helpful for us as staff to read through that and see what other communities are doing. And then also last year's snow flyer, but I do have a snapshot of this year's for you in tonight's presentation. Policy objectives, I'm not going to read the whole slide to you. The intent with providing objectives within the policy was to identify that the approach of the policy is a balanced approach. So if we, for example, did not care about the environment, which I know is not the case, but if we didn't, then maybe we would move forward with putting brine or pretreatment on all of our streets. But because we also care about cost, that's not cost effective. So it's focusing the resources where they have the greatest impact and balancing our approach forward. The objectives are not in order of importance, they are truly just trying to reference decisions, we're factoring in the safety, mobility, the economics of it, the environment, as well as our overall communication approach. And that it is a collaboration between the city and its citizens, not just solely a city responsibility, nor just a citizen responsibility. So I'll start with enforcement and communication, they really go hand in hand. And when we hear from the public or from staff, we want to increase enforcement or have a heavier hand or strict enforcement. It, it is coupled with improvements to communication. And so that is what we have found in all of our efforts to move this policy in a positive direction. And I just noted here that within the policy, we have identified some standards of what acceptable communication strategy includes, as well as a requirement for a communications plan, so that each year we're reevaluating how effective we were the year before in communicating with the public and adjusting as necessary. That would be an administrative decision by our city administrator, but it's still a valuable document. As it relates to enforcement, one of the key components with this effort is to move the regulations from policy to, to city code and from city code to policy, really cleaning that up. We have elements within city code that talk about when it is, when we have two to four inches of snow, we will plow. That's now more in alignment with a policy versus in our policy, we say you can't park on the odd side of the street, that should be in code. So from an enforcement perspective, making sure that the residents know where to look for the rules, and that being just in city code is a clear way to communicate, and hopefully the clear communication will improve the overall compliance with those rules. So coupled with education, all national standards point to proper and prompt enforcement is essential to the effectiveness. That's consistent with what we're hearing from city council, as well as our citizens in our staff's perspective. What the policy now adds is that the warnings before citations will be reserved for rare circumstances. So a lot of the national standards and research that other communities have done have provided supporting evidence that consistent enforcement, timely enforcement does have an effect on compliance. And so just documenting again expectations that we agree if you. we agree, if you pass this, or feedback from you that you don't agree, that warning, less warnings and really going straight to a citation as determined by an enforcement officer is the most appropriate approach. And then we also noted the emphasis and priority of enforcement will be clearly identified. And so including the emergency snow routes is really the first priority. In other words, if our community resource officers are out giving those citations, they really need to begin with the enforcement on the emergency service route or the emergency snow routes, then moving to priority ones, et cetera. As it relates to sidewalks, when we adopted the pedestrian priority network in our multimoto plan, we noted that from an enforcement perspective, it's really difficult to enforce citywide, you know, all at once. We can't be everywhere at once. So where do we start? And the answer was on the adopted priority network, because those are intended to be around areas such as our senior centers and our schools and our public facilities. That's what that network route was developed around. Also, the ADA guidelines and standards, they also have recommendations related to enforcement and priorities related to sidewalks. So bringing that all together from an enforcement perspective is consistent with this new standard. So examples of improved communication, this was not in your policy, but just a sneak preview of some of the efforts we've been taking on since our last conversation. On the left is a sign that is intended to be distributed throughout town. Approximately 30 to 40 of those signs placed just as an additional effort to inform the public that there is no parking on the odd side citywide unless posted otherwise between these months. One key difference here, and we'll talk about it more with the code update, is the date moving from, we typically do November 1st and moving it to December, while we might get snow today, the difference really is that as the season goes on, that's when the challenging conditions exist more. I think that from an enforcement perspective, the shorter that duration, the better, is a lot of the feedback that we received from both the community as well as just our staff and our enforcement. On the right-hand side is a flyer that will be mailed, or a sample of a flyer that will be mailed to all of our residents. And it's helping to note the parking restrictions, as well as that this is a collaborated effort. So being really clear about our requirements on removing snow from sidewalks, as well as even what seems like a simple statement as far as keeping your trash cans out of the street, that actually has a huge effect. And so it was important to our crews that we communicate that to the public. So this is also encouraging citizens to use the Engage Sandpoint app. That's a great mechanism for us to communicate our rules, as well as changing conditions and active plowing operations. And then while the public survey did not, those that responded did not know and/or communicate that they use the hotline much, we decided to go ahead and keep it. It is a clean way to direct calls to the right staff person in the most efficient way as possible. So if you have an issue, you can certainly call the snow hotline, and that's the most effective way to reach us. I will not go through this slide in detail, but what I do want to know is some really diligent effort with one of our team members, Holly Ellis. Our construction manager spent this past week contacting other jurisdictions and doing a lot of homework and research on the idea of the city having a role in connecting volunteers with those that are in need. Many other jurisdictions do this and/or different approaches. So, for example, in our workshop, we talked about the idea of, well, what happens if the city just took on the maintenance for all of the sidewalks? I think where you had asked, what would be the cost? So we did the homework. While it may not be precise, it's based upon other jurisdictions. For the number of miles of sidewalks that we have to shovel all of the sidewalks, that would be about $500,000 per year in cost. For our street services, we spend $270,000 per year. So it's a substantial cost. Could we scale that back by picking some sidewalks and not others? Then you get into fairness and equity, and it becomes a difficult enforcement challenge. So that has been tried. We wanted to highlight that Holly spoke with several of those jurisdictions, and they noted that it typically takes a while and that they have staffing challenges as well. So I appreciate our citizens, and I think staff at times would feel as well that, hey, this could be simplified if we just took this on as the city, whether we hire a contractor or we have our own staff to do it, or temp seasonals. And unfortunately, across the nation, it really has, jurisdictions have a hard time fulfilling that just as, as much as it sounds good. And so I think especially given our smaller jurisdiction and our available resources, that would be challenging for us. As we move down the list, there are volunteer programs that she reached out to, some really neat programs. She spoke with several of the jurisdictions that have those, and everyone senses that that's the most cost-effective approach and really the most effective in implementation, and that it's the quickest. The con with it, or the negative, is that other municipalities, as I've noted here, reported low volunteers. At this point, it doesn't appear that that would be a problem in Sandpoint. We seem, at least initially, to have a really solid base of volunteers. We're going to continue to bet that before we commit to anything, as the next slide states. However, retaining those volunteers can be challenging as well as consistency. So if you have a high school student that has an event, they can't make it that day to do the snow plowing, for example. There's just challenges with staffing when you rely solely on volunteers. And then the last but very important note with that is there is an administrative effort to helping to connect volunteers with those in need, and is that really a city role or not? We're going to continue to work through that. But I wanted you to know that we did hear the public on that, and we're doing our homework.
Can I make a suggestion? And Jennifer, you may have thought this, but the Envision Center has the volunteer connect thing, so yeah, the city maybe could partner with them and let them do it.
Agreed. Thank you. And we have reached out to them in past years. In fact, we used to have it on our flyer that they were a resource to contact. The challenge is that their resources are relatively limited too, so I appreciate your point on the, like, could we partner somehow? And so on the next slide, I did note that to engage the Sandpoint Community Resource Center, great minds think alike, and I think that that's something we need to continue to bet through. So our, our thought this year is a phased implementation. This year, we feel comfortable placing information on our website that says, here's some options of resources. At a minimum, we feel that's something we can do as a city. And then in future years, we'll continue to determine if and how it's viable for the city to assist. So all around the notion of improved communications, how, how can we get those resources out?
Yeah, this might be a question for the police chief, but I, I view in my neighborhood, there's two types of people who don't shovel their sidewalks. There's the 85-year-old woman who lives two doors down from me, who luckily, my next-door neighbor has a snow blower and always snow blows her sidewalk. So but there's no way she could do it by herself. She's a widow. And then there's her next-door neighbor, who's a renter, who never shovels a sidewalk, and he has zero excuses for why he doesn't shovel a sidewalk. So my question for the chief is, if, if I call and complain about these, this neighbor who doesn't shovel, I'm not going to complain about the old, the old lady. But if you go knock on a door to issue, do you knock on a door to issue a citation? Do you put it in their mailbox? And if you, if you knock on the door and you're ready to write a ticket, an 85-year-old woman comes to the door, how, what's, how does that differ from like a 29-year-old renter who just doesn't give, give a care in the world about it and is literally just doesn't care about doing his civic duty? Because there are those two. So, so how do we connect that 85-year-old woman, but at the same time, the 29-year-old, you write him a ticket right on the spot?
The, the great thing about our agency is we have discretion to make those decisions and sell the discretion for those officers, whether they're writing a specific ticket or interns, or whether it's snow removal. They have that discretion. So if they knock on a door and it's an 85-year-old lady, our crews have been, had done a phenomenal job the last couple of years of finding those people that have sidewalks, mailbox, not only helping them shovel their sidewalks, but finding resources for them to help clear their sidewalks versus the other ones. So if they come into that on knocking to somebody, I'm pretty confident that they would make the right choice and getting the resources they need to take care of their sidewalk.
Right. It does seem like maybe the police officers, the ones who are making the connection with those who need help.
In some cases, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to level of service, the policy helps to clarify the level of service. Again, defining expectations is the purpose of the policy, and we have historically used priorities to reference our level of service. And I think it's really important to clarify that by priority, it simply means to represent an order. It is not saying one street is more important than another, and that has been a comment from some in the public, and that's not the intent. And so further clarifying in the, the policy that the level of service in the city of Sandpoint for this policy would be passable. So, for example, a lot of highways have bare pavement levels of service. That's why you might find the interstate system has bare pavement, and then you drive into a town and it still has snow on the road. That's because we invest in different resources for snow removal services. Ours is not air pavement, it's passable. Well, what does passable mean? So the policy states that it's a surface that is free as much, as free of as much ice and snow as is practical and can be traveled safely at reasonable speeds without issue. This is applicable to both streets and sidewalks. That's why it says surface. And that's why it notes by a bicycle or a vehicle equipped for winter conditions. So a Ferrari maybe would not be able to pass on a street this, a different vehicle. Or in the case of pedestrians, you know, how could you travel it safely with minimal effort? So you're not post-holing four feet every time you're walking. That may not be defined as passable. And then last but not least, the bare pavement, or in this case, bare service, surface is applicable to curb ramps. So passable is not acceptable for a curb ramp. It really needs to be bare. And we have about 800 of them in this town, so we actually have a lot of curb ramps. We have updated the level of service map. I know it's really small. It wasn't your packet. I'm happy to discuss it more, zoom in later at the end of the presentation. What I do want to note is that our workshop, we discussed adding some additional priority one streets. We've incorporated those in the map, and then you can see some vaguely here, you can see dashed red lines at the top of the mount, map. It notes that these are the emergency snow routes. So it creates a bit of a great system. So especially in the case of a really heavy snow event, this is where our resources must be focused, and it overlaps with other priorities. I will not read this whole slide to you, but again, the policy defines specifically what emergency snow routes exist. And I do want to note that these streets were, this, this was a collaborated effort by staff. We really took into consideration with emergency services our crews as well. The slide in front of you, I do want to note that these are changes from your city council package that was posted. So in red are changes since publishing that staff report. I apologize, I had some further conversation with our parks maintenance staff that are responsible for many of these areas, and we made some adjustments to it. What you'll find is that many of the locations that were noted in priority C have merely been bumped up to priority B. So we've increased their priority. We have not decreased any priorities in this.
And, and that is actually consistent with current practices. So I don't know, we, we had had these under priority C, but all of those that were taken under priority C that were added to priority B, that's consistent with what we've done in previous years. Thank you for that clarification.
I had one small comment. I wondered why the city hall sidewalks were priority B. For some odd reason, I just thought it was city hall. Maybe that's the one sidewalk that should be in the priority A category.
Well, I appreciate that comment, and this is certainly up for discussion. So as we move forward, if you see any changes that you would recommend, that certainly could be incorporated. My hope is that should you decide to make a motion this evening to adopt this policy that you would just, as presented, so that these changes that are in red are incorporated in that decision. Additional changes since the staff report was presented, we included a table to help simplify the level of service. So on the left-hand side, it's representing the priority streets, 1, 2, and 3. 1 are primarily your heavily-used streets, your arterials and your collectors. Priority 2 is typically our downtown streets that we perform at night, where we have a significant amount of parking on the streets, and then last but certainly not least, as I noted earlier, our residential streets, which are priority 3. And then working down the list are the descriptions related to pathways and sidewalks and parking lots. On the minimum passable width, that is, I can't emphasize the word minimum enough. We currently have in city code that when it snows two to four inches, that we'll plow curb to curb, and that's not realistic, nor have we ever done that. So clarifying the expectation is two lanes of travel versus a single lane of travel. I know some people would say, well, how do you define two lanes versus single lane? There are some standards associated with that, and our crews are familiar with them. That gets into the weeds of the how we implement this policy, which is administrative. I will tell you that the fire code would provide that a 20-foot passable lane is minimum, and then when you're at a fire hydrant 26. So our crews do keep that in mind as the season moves on. It makes things challenging to keep those widths at all times. And then the treatment is just really being clear that we do not brine or salt or sand our residential streets. We do if they're at an intersection with another priority, but it goes back to that balanced approach and not or, and considering the environment and costs as well. Again, the changes in red are, as a result of some discussions with our parks maintenance staff and clarifying our current practices, Jennifer. The use of gates, everyone's favorite subject. So in our workshop, we discussed the effectiveness of gates goes down, the heavier the snow is, or the heavier snowfall, the accumulation of snowfall. There's a variety of factors that contribute to whether or not those gates are effective. And so it seemed most appropriate to eliminate the first bullet point. I think that will help clarify expectations for our crews. However, we kept the second bullet, which is really noting that the use of snow gates may be suspended during events in which the snow is greater or wetter than their use would be effective. That's fairly logical, I hope, and my sense is that historically, we have been very reserved in the in ceasing the use of snow gates. None of us want to receive the hundreds of phone calls that we receive when we stop using them. We do not take that decision lightly. However, there are times that it's appropriate, particularly back to the purpose of why we do snow removal services. And that is, as we discussed before, balancing those priorities, right? It's important we have mobility. It's important we have safety, and that our emergency services can get through our. So if, if we need to make that decision, the policy still provides that it can be done. And then noting that we do use snow gates will not be used on walkways, but we do use them in ADA ramps. And so that additional clarification seemed warranted. Monitoring. We'll not explain the graph on the left, but if you're interested, it is on NOAA. It's my favorite graph maybe in the world. So it gives a lot of detail about how we make decisions for pretreatment and snow removal and predictability. I will say that it changes all the time, and so we actually, we take screenshots every time we make a decision based upon this forecast, because you'll make a decision, and then you'll find the weather changes, and sure enough, you made the wrong decision. But it was based upon a forecast that existed at that time. So the point with that is monitoring is critical. And so the policy provides some further clarification on what we mean by monitoring. And I'm hopeful that the last bullet there that's underlined, it notes that as we continue to monitor conditions and our ability to provide passable streets, that once the priorities are passable, that then we'll move on to the even side of the streets as vehicles move, as well as removing berms. So we talked a lot about being able to serve residential streets in the evening hours, and allowing that to occur will enable us to improve some of this berm removal that has been causing, I know, problems for many residential streets where they just tend to get too narrow.
Comment, Amanda. You live in a ski town, and we all know what these graphs are.
Well, good.
Because we use them, don't we, Jason?
I've met many who've never seen it, but I appreciate that you do. That's wonderful. So speaking of passable streets and related code amendments, we have two separate sections within city code that relate to snow removal. Title 6 is specific to motor vehicles and traffic, and Title 7 is specific to public ways and property, which includes our sidewalks. We have included some draft changes to both the Chapter 1 traffic regulations, as well as Chapter 2 within Title 7 for street sidewalks and public ways. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we are proposing that we strike the section on 6-1-4-3. the section on six dash one dash four dash three. This is really more of a policy type of provision. This is that section I was describing earlier that currently notes upon two inches to four inches at the discretion of the public courts director will, will plow curb line to center line, et cetera. So these provisions are going away in code, but have been replaced by everything that we just discussed as the intent here. Then within title six, taking some of the provisions that are currently in our policy and putting them into code related to where you can and can't park have been drafted. So winter parking limits as well as cul-de-sac parking limits. I do want to point out that the cul-de-sac parking limits are not intended to be specific or limited to winter. They're intended to be all year. This is solely based around, I shouldn't say solely, that's not fair. It is primarily based around fire code and emergency services. We have standards for how big a cul-de-sac have to be for a reason. It's for fire truck service. When we have vehicles parked in a cul-de-sac, our cul-de-sacs are not designed to accommodate vehicles and fire services. It also precludes us from being able to sweep our streets. So that's why I said it's not solely. There is a, there is a component of service as well as being able to plow it. So a year, year around policy of no parking in the cul-de-sac anytime is what's being proposed. So the sign on the right-hand side would be installed as you're entering neighborhoods and or at specific cul-de-sacs. And then the winter parking limit is just reiterating what we already discussed, limiting it from December first to March first. That you are, that parking on the street is limited to only the even side of the street unless posted otherwise. And then the defining what we mean by even side, it's not even days of the week. It's even addresses. And then parking on the street is prohibited on either side of any street designated as an emergency snow route. That's a really important phrase there or sentence, I should say. Because on that map that I just showed you, majority of those routes are in fact already no parking on both sides. They're Division and Boyer, Baldi and Great Northern. However, there are a few that are new and that would include Pine. So per our workshop, Pine Street east of Division, basically between Boyer and Division continues to be a parking challenge and it gets to be way too narrow. And it is an important route for east-west connection. The emergency snow route includes Superior and First and Cedar and our hospital. As you all know, we have on-street parking. That is a different situation. So that is unless otherwise signed, right? Similar to what we've discussed. So I would encourage, you know, as we move forward with any changes to code, that we give that a lot of thought because that's going to have a lot of impact on many residents and many businesses. And I think it's worth consideration. Title seven sidewalks. We had a question, I believe councillor Sparrow asked, well, what time do you have to have all of your sidewalks shuffled? And our current code as is struck here is nine o'clock in the morning. That is very difficult to enforce, as I'm sure chief would attest to, as well as our community resource officers. It's also somewhat very impractical. If it snowed at eight forty-five in the morning or it snowed at noon and you were at work, how, how are you going to achieve that code? And so looking at other jurisdictions and other federal standards, the norm, not everybody, but the norm on average is that you will have it removed within twenty-four hours of an event. Well, what do we mean by an event? So that's why this code was drafted to say two inches or more of snow. If it's less than that, that qualifies as passable. It's not a struggle to pass through. You're not post tolling hopefully through that. And then just really helping to clarify that you are responsible for removing the snow at curb ramps and hydrants. And so, and then also keeping them free from ice. That's really important. I am almost done, I promise. Summary and highlights from what I just told you, I'm not going to read it, but I'll give you a second to take a look at that. And then as far as next steps go, as I discussed earlier, communications plan. The policy provides it needs to be in effect by November fifteenth. That's very soon. And then also to order and install new signs, mail the brochure out. We already have a quote for that brochure, so hoping to get that out very soon. Update our operations plan. We did not operate, update the operations plan yet. That's the how do we achieve the expectations? And it's administratively approved because it's really important. We know those expectations before we finish a plan that's meeting them. And then last but not least, bringing forward to you those draft code revisions at the next city council meeting. So with that, if you are willing to please consider approving the revised snow removal policy as presented or with any additional changes that you may have, I certainly am willing to discuss those and entertain any questions.
Amanda, your three minutes are up.
Mr. Mayor.
To councilwoman rules question earlier relative to the priorities to the sidewalks, pathways and parking lots, which is the responsibility area of parks. If, if we wanted to collapse the priority A and priority B as one group and just do a priority A and a priority B, which is our C, I think that would be fine. We are getting through all of those things at one time. So our sidewalks at city hall are typically cleared by eight o'clock in the morning when people are arriving. So I think our level of detail in that priority A and priority B relative to the sidewalks and pathways is really, we're getting more into the operational level of when they're out with trucks and then they're out with the snow blowers. We're getting through all of those every day. Monday through Sunday. So seven days a week, we are getting through the As and Bs as a whole group.
Yeah, I trust that staff will do a good job and get that done. I just thought it was funny how the city hall sidewalk fell into B. It was more of a, a just, you know, Deb's funny explanation. Mr. Mayor, may I, since I'm already talking, compliment the staff on that wonderful article about how all the other volunteer programs work. That's lovely, like data for us to understand decisions that we're making. I wouldn't, I think, want to live in Boston. They only have like two hours to get rid of their snow. And then I love the idea of getting, the research showed, you know, less warnings and, and more citations. There was also another piece about each separate day is a distinct violation, even if it's the snowstorm that happened five days ago because of our civil disobedient neighbors as Jason has. And then I also thought of, maybe there's an application process that would happen with the city that I think was in part of that, something as simple as maybe we have sort of an age thing. Or maybe, you know, they have somebody who already has a handicap placard through their doctor or something like that, that would be evidence of, I can't do this because I don't want the civil disobedient taking advantage of the system. So maybe there would be some simple way to apply on the Engage Sandpoint. Or if somebody received a citation, I didn't know that we were so hands-on. And then they were able to say, hey, I just can't get it done, that we would waive that. But it's, I, I trust staff to do a good job with that. And then the other maybe great or not so great idea that I had, that it would be wonderful to pay one of our wonderful city employees to maybe drive the snowplow on the Fourth of July parade. And we can use that as a great educational and funny opportunity to teach people how we're going to do our new stow policies and which sides parking on the side of the street. So maybe we could have some of those giant signs made and put them on the dump truck or the snowplow. And maybe as a part of that piece of education to maybe do something within the winter carnival. And I guess the reason I bring that up is because there are plenty of people who don't read the flyers in their utility deals or they don't care about engaging standpoint or getting on the city website. So maybe those people that are the civil disobedience might be at the parade or doing other things. And it might be just a fun way to educate town and give them a laugh. So.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, I just want to say thank you to Amanda for the time and the input that you've taken from this council here, especially on the communication enforcement and education and the thirty to forty additional signs as well too. I think it's a catchy slogan in terms of odd side citywide. And, and will definitely help with the enforcement as well. And I hope to see that the, the signs that those neighborhoods go up in, we start to see those homeowners and those residents point towards those signs as they see the enforcement starting to begin or continue throughout the winter season. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well said. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you, Amanda. Thank you, staff. Thank you, members of the public for coming this evening and this meeting is adjourned.
Meeting's unadjourned. Shelby is just out of whack today.
Are there any members from the public who are still awake? I want to entertain a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the revised snow removal policy as presented.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. This will be a real call vote.
Councillor McAllister?
Yes.
Councillor Dick?
Yes.
Councillor Rule?
Yes.
Councillor Groot?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes and thank you everyone for your understanding this evening.
Meeting adjourned.